Patrick, are we ready? If we want to do roll call first, I might do roll call and then consent agenda and then do the students of the month. Cause I think a few people aren't here yet.
Um, yeah.
Is that okay? Okay. Um, so as I said, we'll do student of the month in just a moment. I know a few people aren't here yet. Um, so let's start with roll call, please.
Assig, I feel like he's on his way in.
Think he just pulled up.
Okay.
Uh, Cribs is excuse.
He'll be here.
Okay. Uh Laird. Montemayor.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Barhawk.
Here.
Mayor. We have a call.
Patrick. Uh, let's go ahead and do consent agenda as well. Um, consent agenda is pretty big this week. It consists of approval of minutes from our last meeting, September twenty-third accounts payable. Uh, three local liquor licensing items, one for Fat Thai, one for Five Point Film and one for the Crystal River Theater for special events. Um, environmental board application for Nicole Rom. Uh, construction contract for ADA drinking fountain, concrete pad and miners park. Resolution number ten, series twenty twenty-five reaffirming the town of Carbondale support for protecting the Thompson Divide. That was requested by our partners at Wilderness Workshop, uh, in light of kind of recent changes at the federal level. Um, and a construction contract from all around property maintenance for the Thompson House irrigation and landscape buffer zone project. Any questions or items to pull for discussion? Okay.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Erica, second by Jess, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Uh, with that, I think we will go ahead with student of the month, so I'll stand over here and if I call your name, you can come up and um, I'll read a little bit about you from your teachers and give you your certificate. Okay, our first student of the month is Joey Steele. Hi Joey, I like your hat. You can stand right here next to me so you can meet your parents and they can take pictures and stuff. Um, tell us a little bit about yourself Joey, what school do you go to? Ross, sorry, and what grade are you in?
Third.
Third grade, alright, well, here's what your teachers said when they nominated you for student of the month. They said Joey communicates well with adults and children in the classroom. He can be counted on to do his work and he enjoys helping others in the school. It's great to hear, congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work Joey. Second student of the month is Natalio, Natalia Chekovitz. Natalia here. How about Everett Tomlin? Alright. Hi Everett.
Hi.
You can stand right here next to me. Um, tell us a little bit about yourself, what school do you go to?
I go to Chris, uh, Carbonell Middle School.
Carbonell Middle, I bet you went to Crystal River before that. And what grade are you in?
Grade.
Alright, well, here's what your teachers said about you when they nominated you. They said the fifth grade team would like to recognize Everett for his compassion and perseverance. Everett always shows compassion toward his classmates. He also perseveres in his classwork going above and beyond in his learning. Congratulations. Alright, congratulations, keep up the good work. Alright, we have a couple of moments, I'm not sure if you're here, is Alexa here? Alexa Nunez, Fernandez, Caroline Servitor, Hazel Capera. Okay, well, we know them, we'll see them when they come in. Thanks everybody. Raleigh, you want a picture? Raleigh's here from the Soprisun and if you want to have a picture taken out in the hallway, he'll uh, yeah. Thanks, everybody. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. If you have an item you'd like to address the board on that's not on tonight's agenda, um, or that doesn't have a public comment period on the agenda, now's your chance. You can just approach the podium and have about three minutes and please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi.
And adjust your comments to me.
For the record, my name is Lynn Kirchner and I'm here tonight representing Carbondale Homeless Assistance. Um, our address is seven one one Main Street, Carbondale, Colorado. Um, see a lot of new faces on the board, see a lot of familiar faces. I am gonna pass around some handouts. This presentation is basically my annual update about Carbondale Homeless Assistance. We go into our, believe it or not, our twelfth year this November. Um, I saw Stacy, um, is it not on?
I'm not, I'm not, uh, for you.
Oh, thank you. Gosh, where's this guy, what are you doing? Very helpful, um. I saw Stacy yesterday at, at Paul's Memorial and she reminded me that twelve years ago, we started this, she was mayor and, you know, and her dad had asked at one time, Carbondale has homeless? But what's, what's this, you know, we didn't have homeless people and when he was growing up, so. We've evolved, thankfully, we've never had a major problem here, but we do have concerned people. We have people that are habitat challenged as they like to consider themselves. They don't like to be considered homeless since some uh, choose to be in the situation they are in, but they choose to be habitat challenged. What we do, what we've been doing primarily with the help of the town of Carbondale. Uh, Eric and his predecessor at uh, the Recreation Department. We provide daily hygiene and a hygiene program for them so that those that are trying to get work or maintain unemployment, they have the ability to go and get freshened up, take a shower, shave and be presentable for interviews. That Shower Pass program uh, has been in place, as I said, for probably, we put it in effect the first year, so about eleven years. And over the years, we've um, evolved and the town actually supports us with fifteen hundred dollars. Um, this past year, our growing need in the community um, has evolved to about four thousand dollars um, in expenses. And so, we'd like the board to consider um, if there's any possibility to expand their contribution to us. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. The handout I just gave you um, basically covers what we do. Everything from providing resources, there's resources in English and in Spanish of where to go, what to do, how to get help. And then we connect people with people who can help them. Um, just this past week, I've had four individuals, two of which were longtime locals. Very successful business people in the community who have recently fallen on hard times. They came back to this community because they said, this is where home is and this is where we know we can probably get help from our community. Um, both are gentlemen, both are seniors. Uh, one has a neck injury, the other has a back injury, so they're not capable of working right now. They're in the healthcare system. Um, one had a vehicular accident and lost his van that he was living out of. And so, we're getting all kinds of unique and interesting situations coming back to Carbondale. Um, but they were very successful here at one time and now they're here needing our help. So, we provide some grocery cards, we um, provide assistance um, for camping gear. Um, we don't encourage camping, we direct them to legal campgrounds. We try to keep them off of private property and illegal camping. Um, we also educate them to the dangers of car camping and um, where it's appropriate to park for that purpose. Um, and we work very closely with the town of Carbondale Police Department, by the way, uh, twenty-four seven. We work with them, if they see someone in need, they'll contact us and we'll get them clothing. Uh, near New is our angel, uh, they help us out all the time. And Ragged Mountain Sports um, is just a blessing for us. We can bring anyone there at any time, even after hours and someone will walk us through and help them get outfitted for the elements. So, it's a great resource that we have right here in the community. We are in the process of doing a um, how to donate is clearly indicated. Right now, we're accepting things for the winter time. Um, we look at ski, or ski coats, sleeping bags, tents, gift cards and money at any time. Our goal this fall is to raise ten thousand dollars. So, I appreciate the town, I appreciate everyone who has donated and their families who have donated and supported us. Uh, we're small, but uh, we're significant in the community, so, thank you, Ben.
Thank, thanks Lynn, and um, just to kind of remind the board how this generally works because Carbondale Homeless Assistance is, is not a a nonprofit that can qualify for our grants. We do this sort of as a, it's the one group really that's outside of that program and we give them the money and then they turn around and buy the passes back from the rec department for the showers and then they manage the distribution of those. So, it's sort of a little bit of a circular thing, but this is the way it's worked out for many years and we kind of discuss it a little bit every year and say, is this the way we want to keep doing it? And as long as Lynn says this is the way she wants to keep doing it.
We don't have the manpower, unfortunately, and when, you know, the old ninety, ten percent, well, it's more like ninety-nine, one percent, so. Our volunteer part of the organization is, everyone all has full-time jobs and we all do this whenever we can, so, we're on call.
Great, and so your request this year is for four thousand, is that, did I hear that right?
That's what, we would love to have four thousand if that's available.
Okay.
And I know um, Ryan and I had spoken earlier in this year and he said, how much has the cost of living gone up since you started this twelve years ago? Maybe we should look at that, so. I didn't have time to crunch those number, Ryan, and, but, you know, it definitely has gone up significantly, for example. Getting someone in off the street, you know, we used to be able to get thirty-nine ninety-nine special at the Comfort or Days Inn. That's more like closer to three hundred dollars a night, especially in prime season, so, we're, we've got a couple of, they're willing to help us, but not at such a significant rate. So, we are working with hotels in Glenwood Springs to get people in and um, that runs us about a hundred and fifty dollars a night.
Okay, well, we're having our first budget overview tonight, so we can discuss.
Alright, well, thank you, and again, if there's any questions, don't feel, you know, feel free to call me and ask me.
Great, thanks.
Appreciate your, thank you.
Thanks all.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board?
I would. My name is Bryn Ungerleiter. I sent an email to, I think, most of you the other day to shed light on the parking situation on Main Street. Do any of you live near Main Street?
We all use it and we just don't do a whole lot of.
You don't do a lot of parking, right?
Well, we don't do a lot of back and forth here, so we'll.
No, that's great, um, I live next to Tiny Pine, great restaurant, fully support them, love them, I'm glad they've been able to stick in that spot. There's also another commercial property on the other side of my residential area that is set to begin construction soon. Looking forward to seeing how that goes for them, full support of them as well. Uh, my neighbors and I have had routine issues with parking around this area. Um, we are seeing lots of double parked vehicles and I know this is a very low hanging fruit compared to obviously our homeless problem. I really enjoyed listening to that, but I have a really wonderful um, elder neighbor who's Latina and she's terrified of driving. And bless her heart, she will park down the road from where she's paying rent to live and carry all of her supplies in after cleaning all day to avoid this situation because of trying to pull into our driveway. So, I'm coming to you with a really, really wonderful request to please paint the parking spaces on that side of Main Street to help our wonderful patrons that are coming to support our local businesses, to respect the neighbors that live close by and um, avoid further interactions between the residents that, like myself and my neighbors, having to go to Tiny Pine and tell them that their patrons are blocking our driveway, cause it's just not fun for anyone. And I know that they would also probably enjoy to stop hearing from us as well, so. I um, understand you guys will be reviewing the budget this evening, that's wonderful news for me to hear. I'm also open to any ideas that would help, um, that are not expensive and more cost effective. If that means that the neighbors need to start painting that parking space out front or the parking spaces outside of Tiny Pine. Whatever it needs to be, we are happy to work with the town of Carbondale, we want to do things the right way, the legal way. We want to make sure everybody's happy moving forward, but we would really love to see this issue resolved immediately. I did speak with the people that we're talking to or um, painting the new bike squares that are green on the street and they told me that they could not help me in any way, shape or form, so that is why I'm here standing in front of all of you this evening.
Thanks for your comment.
Yeah, is that it?
Yep, yeah, we'll continue to discuss it, the manager might have an update if you want to hang out as we do trustee comments and then he'll do an update, but.
Okay.
We just kind of take the comments at this stage.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um, anybody else from the public who'd like to address the board tonight? Anybody online? Alright, thanks. Um, moving on then to trustee comments, been a few weeks since we met. Um, anybody attended any meetings or have any other updates for the good of the group tonight?
I, I have a couple, I'll be fast, cause I know we have a long agenda, um, but I've been traveling, so I, I had to miss a couple of my meetings, but um, First Friday is always great, I did the Rally of the Valley, I know we're gonna talk about the mobile home, but I viewed, I viewed the um, movie and it was a little long, but it was great, it was good information and I appreciated that and, you know, it was at the thirty center, so that was um, it had a good feeling and, and everything was, went great on that. And if you donated, local businesses matched, so that was even better, I thought, so. Um, I thought that was a great event, so thank you, everybody who was involved in that, and then um, my daughter works at Tiny Pine, so I had asked her about um, um, some things that Bryn um, brought up and she said it would probably be an easy fix if they just put the parking, Tiny Pine's closed all of October because the owners just had a baby, so maybe it's a good time to look at that, um, but it, it was pretty valid, I guess. Um, you know, the parking that does get kind of backed up there. Um, it'll be interesting to see since the, the restaurant is closed, how that impacts all that, what that she's going through, um, or that the neighbors are going through. And um, yeah, and that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks Christina, maybe we'll just go around just as you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things, um, I went to the chamber board meeting last week, yeah. Last week, um, they're doing well, they have four hundred and eighty-one members, which is a really high number for them, which I think is great. Uh, it's a testament to what they're doing in the um, area. Um, their, their main focus headed into the new year is how to support businesses and um, economic development and sort of new things that they can deploy into small businesses. Um, then I had a meeting with G C E and about the Impact Accelerator Grant that we've been talking about. So, I just have a couple of updates on that, I'm meeting with them again tomorrow. Um, right now, the plan is to go in with a policy that creates a package of options for creating a regional clean energy fund to better uh, serve G C E long-term, create a long-term funding source for them, and then a project that basically creates a rebate program that works across the G C E region. Um, they learned more about the grant in the time before we met and the grant is actually asking, the state is asking for three different budgets. They want a restrained budget, which is like smaller than what they're saying. They want the budget they're talking about, so around two hundred thousand dollars for policy and then two, around two million for a project. And then they want a vision budget, up to five million for the project. And so, we talked about how that would look, like how you could uh, make the rebates bigger, how you could really help residents. How we could, um, G C E could create programs for local governments to deploy these um, rebates and systems and um, it seems like they're on the right track. I told them Carbondale is willing to be the main, the lead applicant and then I think Glenwood's gonna sign on to it as well. And then G C E would be the one that deployed the whole program if they got it, so. Um, they seem like they're on the right track and I'm meeting with them again tomorrow to sort of refine what their um, plan is and they also found out that it's not just a letter of intent. They're calling it a letter of intent on the application, but it is a full grant application. So, they're working on that. I think they'll have it together, I think they'll be ready for the November seventeenth deadline. So, if I get any more information tomorrow, I'll bring that to you guys next week. I think that's it.
Eric, anything?
So, it sounds like it's good G C E's doing it and we're not adding that to staff.
I feel like we're on the right track.
Um, I attended a Parks and Rec meeting um, last week and uh, shared our discussion and decision on Chaco's Park, parking, uh, which does feel like a year ago that we talked about that now. Um, and they were super supportive and I kind of walked them through how, you know, our decision was made and they um, agreed that that sounded like we got to the right, um, right spot and they appreciated that we had such a, a kind of big picture discussion about it, so, so they're on board. Um, and then they also, um, Eric presented an overview of the budget, which will get the same presentation uh, later this month, or next week, maybe. Um, and I did not get to attend the Potato Days, but I heard it was amazing and heard the parade was epic. Um, and they talked a lot about it at Parks and Rec and our Parks and Rec staff and public work staff put a ton of work into that event. And what came to mind was, you know, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about economic development and just how much our Parks and Rec Department contributes to kind of our economic development in our community, whether it's supporting events or our park infrastructure that provides a place for all of these events. So, I do think it'd be really good in those future discussions and maybe we have a Parks and Rec Commission member included in that Chamber Creative District, cause I um, really think they're almost uh, we're, we and the, the, therefore them, just kind of providing this platform for all of these really cool things to happen, so. Um, and it was just a good reminder of that, of how much work they put into the Potato Day event, which got a ton of people downtown on a very rainy day, so. That's it.
Okay, thanks Erica, Colin?
Um, echo uh, Erica's comments about Potato Day, it was a lot of fun and uh, oat milk with the cowboy coffee was a big hit, uh, it was just typical Carbondale. Um. Uh, I just wanted to thank this board and all the members of the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition who contributed to the mobile home purchase, it happened today. So, uh, forty-two million dollars, um, and it affects thirty-nine homes and over five hundred residents, uh, really a huge lift, so. Thanks to everyone who made that happen. Um, there is an ongoing fundraising effort to deal with some rental assistance efforts. Uh, some folks are on fixed incomes, single parents and uh, some of the residents had some significant lot increases. So, um, just an ongoing effort that will be going, I'll keep you up to date on where that goes. We have some funding to get it going, but uh, clearly there's been a, a change of finances, those don't change until end of April. So, everybody has a little time on that. Um, Rapha has free fares, so if you haven't taken the bus recently, you don't need a pass and you don't have to buy a ticket. You can just walk on and go wherever you want to until November thirtieth. And then I think most of us have received ballots and I'm always amazed how efficient uh, voting is in Colorado. Uh, they just show up and we drop them off and they get counted and we have people elected and ballots uh, you know, approved or denied and it's a role model for how it can be done efficiently and easily and uh, much kudos to the clerks who make that happen.
Thanks Colin.
Chris? Yeah, thanks so much Colin for all those updates, that was great. Um, I, I did go to the Bike Ped Trails Commission meeting and I think that was after we had talked maybe the transportation, the budget, a little bit with Kevin. Um, and so, they, they're, they know about the raised crossings and some of these other things that are sort of sketched into the budget, I think they're pretty supportive of it. I think there's definitely interest in more sort of experimentation. I think there, I think Sopris will probably get maybe more treatment. Um, but um, the, yeah, it's gonna be, I think, I think probably in the beginning of next year, it'll maybe take more shape of what's one of the projects, the tactical projects for next year, so. Um, but in general endorsement of the, the process and um, I think they feel like there were a lot of things learned from the, the experiment in, in the road, in Hendrick in particular. Um. Ch-ch-ch-ch, um, oh, just yeah, Potato Days was great, we got a lucky break on the weather there with a window for the parade and get everybody in the park, um, and then it opened up, but uh, we had a record, a record sale, so that was great and um, yeah, it was a great, great day all around. Um. Uh, Halloween party is gonna be coming up on the thirty-first, um, Friday the thirty-first of October. That is gonna be the Bone Dale Halloween Spooktacular. Uh, it involves the Crystal Theater, Thunder River Theater and K D and K. Um, there'll be two showings of Rocky Horror Picture Show at seven P M and eleven P M. And then there'll be a party sandwiched in between at Thunder River Theater, featuring Sweet Jessup and the Dirty Buckets and a costume contest and a food truck and uh, DJ stuff happening after the Dirty Buckets get off the stage and the second showing happens at the theater, so. Crazy, wild, should be a, should be a great return of the Halloween party and um, we're looking forward to it and hope people um, get out there and buy tickets, there's not that many um, spaces in the theater, so if you want tickets, you should probably jump on them. And uh, yeah, great way to support all three, all three organizations, just melding forces on this event, so. Hoping it can become a, a good uh, tradition, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks Chris, Ross, any comments?
Um, it's been a sort of a slow, a slow um, couple of weeks in the Public Art and Trees Department, so um, no real, real big updates from either of those committees. Um, on Potato Day, yeah, special, I mean, thanks to the Parks Department, I, I kind of had forgotten how much that, that's their, their baby. Um, and so, um, yeah, once again, so, so many smiles, I kind of pop in and out of those things since I'm right down the street. Um, and it's just such a wonderful kind of community spirit kind of thing, I really love that and, and Dandelion Day. Um, had the thought here and, and, and there, um, that I really do wish somehow we could reach out to our Latino and Latina community, community a little bit more, it seems like it's, it's a lot of white faces and we have a, a much broader, more diverse community here that I'd love to see. community here that I'd love to see better represented somehow or another. And I don't, I don't know exactly how, how that happens, but I'm, I'd be happy to help. And so maybe something to, something to look at towards the future. And then also I happened to stop by here to talk to one or two people just at the time that Ryan had gotten Chipotle for the, for the staff. And so um I wanted to thank him and uh staff for, for a quick lunch to hit the spot and also an opportunity to chat with a bunch of folks that, that um all seem to be in good spirits. So it sounds like wonderful things are happening here. And um I happened to luck into a good time to stop by. So much appreciated for the burrito.
All right, thanks Ross. Uh I don't have anything to add. I think it's all been said, so we will move on, yeah?
I just also wanted, I think Ryan's been with us over a month now, but I just wanted to just say for us as trustees, the communication has been so nice and so smooth and I've had some issues come up and I forward it to um Patrick and Ryan and it just gets resolved. And it just helps me as a trustee and the public too, because I'm getting answers faster and quality and better timing. So I just wanted to say that, so thank you.
Great, thanks Christina. I think we would all agree that the, the updates have been really useful. It's not all the minutia anymore. It's really what's going on and what we need updates on, so we really appreciate it. And Ryan's fully two months in here, so.
Well, two month itch.
Okay, moving along to attorney's comments. Mark, anything this evening?
No crying big tears of Susan's departure, but wishing her well. Her swearing in is November 7th, I believe. It's public in Glenwood very well.
Great, thanks for that update. And Ryan, over to you, manager's comments.
Uh we did have Chipotle. I know that's not local sales tax and be the only time we'll go local from here on out. The um individual that was at the podium, just a quick note on the striping on the south side of the street there. My understanding is that uh when the contractor was here doing the striping in that area, uh we had um Public Works and Police, I think, had signs out about not parking there. Those signs got moved by someone other than us and so they couldn't do that striping at that time. But they'll be back before the end of the year uh to do that striping. And I know that um the Speaker's also uh been in touch with the Police Department about making sure uh that um the Chief encouraged her and neighbors, if there are folks that are parked in front of driveways, give us a call and we're certainly patrolling that. So just a quick update there.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to action items then. I see Jared approaching for the first one. Good evening Jared. This is the A and B Mixed Use Project First Amendment to the Development Improvement Agreement.
We do have Will Cofield um online. He's representing A and B Bank. As you guys saw on his request, um this is really um due to a desire to delay the landscaping improvements and some additional sidewalk improvements until after the building's complete. Staff supports the request and prepared the uh First Amendment to the Development Improvement Agreement and we recommend you guys approve that. Have it answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I'm sure Will can answer any questions you might have about the development.
Any questions for staff about the application? Okay. Will, did you wanna add anything?
Nothing to add, I don't think. And appreciate, appreciate the consideration for the application. The project, as you may see, is moving right along and um you know, we strive to get those public improvements in place and just to Jared's point, just a few little odds and ends make most sense to tie in at the end of the project, so we appreciate the consideration for the extension.
Any questions for the applicant? I would just comment that that um late change to the acceleration lane to make it go straight into the roundabout was a great idea, as far as I can tell and coming out of the city market complex now where you turn right. I mean, that's part of their public infrastructure that's part of this agreement. But I know that there was some back and forth on was that gonna be a good idea and I think it wasn't in the original plan. I think Kevin might have caught that and made that that way, but um it's just great. It just seems to really make traffic flow better uh as you go toward the, the roundabout and that combined with the pedestrian crossing, it seems like that whole area is really starting to come together. So great work. If there's no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the First Amendment to the Development Improvements Agreement for Colorado Branch Holdings LLC Mixed Use Project.
I'll second.
Motion by Jess, second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks for hanging with us on that little one. Jared? All right, thank you, Will. Next item on the agenda is the um nicotine tax, the tobacco tax and school district programs. I'll recuse myself from this as a member of the staff at Roaring Fork School District, so Mayor Pro Tim Sparhawk will lead this discussion and Superintendent Anna Cole is here um to answer questions.
Thanks, Hannah. Thanks for joining us. Do you, you provided a great memo, but I thought, do you wanna kind of give us an overview? And then if anybody wants to ask questions? And Ryan, do you wanna kick thing off, anything off?
Oh, I was just gonna tell you everything that you already know as a board, that um there are tobacco tax funds that are available uh to support mental and physical health and that the town has partnered with Roaring Fork historically and uh had a chance to meet uh Superintendent recently and talked a little bit about the work they're doing and here she is.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, headlines I think from this memo are that um we have really appreciated the, the investment from the Town of Carbondale on this work. The impacts are, we think, significant in terms of reducing stigma, helping kids get access to school-based mental health services. And I actually apologize, this project is now led by our Director of Student and Family Services, Kelly Medina, and so she actually manages this work, but she is right now meeting with our District Family Advisory Council, talking about school-based mental health with the Aspen Hope Center and a very big group of parents. So she, we kept her there and I said I'd come here. You know, I think the other headlines are that we have been using blended funding to make sure that we have a school-based mental health provider in every public school. We're hitting a cliff with that. We're losing funding from the Colorado Department of Education that we've had for, gosh, probably nine years. So we're gonna really focus on services at the high schools and then middle schools where possible. And then if there's additional funding for us in a town like Carbondale, um we're really looking at how we can collaborate across our elementary schools. As you all know, there's three public elementary schools in the Town of Carbondale. We work really well together and I actually think this work has brought the schools together in a way that they hadn't worked previously. So just, you know, the recommendation here is to continue the same level of funding, knowing that because of the lack of blended funding, we won't be able to have a school-based mental health provider in every school, although we continue to look for grants and other opportunities. And I know Hope Center does a lot of fundraising around this as well. So I'd love to take your questions. I think your, the Aspen Hope Center's report was also, like their annual report was shared in your packet, um so you can kind of see the whole scope of their work, which has really grown since this work really started with Town of Carbondale investing in a school-based mental health provider at Roaring Fork High School many years ago.
Does anybody have any questions for Anna about overall funding or how the program works or anything?
I just had a question about Ross Montessori. I didn't see them listed anywhere. We have Carbondale Community School, so I just wanted, wondered what the status of that was.
You know, the money, what, what Ross does with the money that we distribute across the schools is they actually don't work with a Hope Center provider, nor does Crystal River Elementary School. They do work in contract with an individual school, like mental health provider who provides support at school. So it looks a little different, school to school, but we make sure that the money is as equitably distributed as possible, given the funding streams that are coming in.
Got it.
Thank you.
I, I just had a, a question about the report and I wonder if this is because maybe Roaring Fork has been doing it longer, but when you look at the Aspen Hope uh individual therapeutic services, over 1,000, which is impressive. There's only 350 kids at the school. And then in Glenwood High School, it's 1,000. It's got three times the population. Any thoughts on how people are accessing the service?
You know, part of it is, I mean, the, the thing that we're most proud of in those reports is when you see the usage rates broken by race and ethnicity that reflect the diversity of our kids and community, which we're really proud of and really proud of the Hope Center in making sure that services are equitable and accessible to all kids. The programs do look different at different schools. It has, you know, the, the provider at Roaring Fork High School has been there a long time. Her relationships are really deep um in the community and with the kids. That continuity, we've realized, really makes a difference. Glenwood had some turnover in the last couple of years. You know, as we're all living within the valley, these sorts of positions are hard to staff and retain, but we've really lucked out at Fork, um having a remarkable provider who's been there a long time. So I think that's a big part of it and I think as that um that stability and relationship building happens, we, it, it kind of snowballs in terms of usage. I was just at the meeting with the Hope Center and they were sharing that this year 30% of their referrals came from other students, which is remarkable um in terms of the kids building a culture of asking for help, de-stigmatizing that. And so I do think that's part of what's happening at Fork. And I, you know, I would say there's, from a district lens, there's pros and cons to the size of all of our schools and one of the real strengths of a school like Roaring Fork High School is that really small community where the kids are very well connected to the adults in the building. And I do think the, the longevity of the program there, um I think where the office is located in the school all makes a difference for accessibility. I don't read too much into it in terms of needs, but just really look at the kind of the relationships that are guiding that.
Well, that's great. I was just very curious and I think we've, even here, we, longevity, stability, the same people, it makes a huge difference and when you have tons of turnover, it just, the whole program can get kind of gummed up and it's really hard for people to take advantage of it, so. Wonderful news.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it'd be good if we talked a little bit about funding and so uh just for the pools come from, because I think a little bit of background would be helpful is, I know the original funds, and this isn't a question for you, it's kind of.
Thanks.
The original funds that we put towards um mental health support, and it was just at Roaring Fork High School and it came from our marijuana tax. And it was, at that time, I remember, it was like, I think we provided, paid for half of a full-time employee or something. And it was before we had the tobacco pack, tax in place. And so um this is kind of for Ryan and Ola, for our staff, you know, kind of, uh I think it would be, I would find it helpful, it's helpful to have this breakdown of our tobacco tax and what we're spending the money on. But um I would be curious if we've now, we're spending just our marijuana tax on other things, but it was kind of the original and Mark, right, remember, kind of some of the original intent was that that money would be put towards part of this prevention of substance abuse as well. And so I want to make sure that we're not, or that we're still kind of maybe holding true to that, if that's important to us. And then um to me, it would be helpful if we also looked at this funding, um because I, I think the way I'm reading it, by the end of the year, we're, we'll have like 225,000, but if we distribute 120 to Roaring Fork School District, that would leave some other funds that we could um give to some of the other original partners, uh like um Stepping Stones and Youth Zone and.
Family Resource Center.
Family Resource Center and Valley, yeah. So there were a few other folks who were originally receiving some of our tobacco, tobacco tax funding, because they were providing important services for our youth, which is the whole, one of our whole initial, you know, kind of um intentions with passing our tobacco tax. So it'd be helpful and we don't have to do it right now. But maybe as a follow-up budget discussion, we just have a short time where maybe we look at those funds. And, and I'm curious if we've, because it's not a separate fund, if there has been a fund balance that then just goes into our general fund and if that's of anything we should be concerned about or, um because it doesn't show up as one of our separate funds in our budget. It just is a line item in our general fund.
The marijuana or the?
The tobacco tax.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that's the, some of the questions that came up when I was thinking about this agenda item is just making sure, because one of, you know, we've heard from um Stepping Stones, which provides an amazing uh resource um for youth in our community and um they can apply through our community grants, but maybe we free up some of our community grant funding by allocating a little bit of this funding towards them. So I just wanna make sure we're.
That sounds perf, I totally agree, but isn't that what we've been doing?
It is, but I think this last, I've, I've, what I was wondering is, I was trying to remember and I, maybe we look up a past discussion, if we were putting money elsewhere as well? Because I feel like last year we were just giving it to Roaring Fork School District, which is great, but.
But it wasn't, we had a small group and then there were recommendations and so much.
That was the year before.
Was that the year before? So we didn't do that last year?
Right, you're, you're spot on that. Like two years ago, we had the committee, they were doing bigger grants, the nonprofits, and then just capacity-wise said, hey, let's just focus on this going straight to school-based mental health and let the nonprofits move through the community grant process. So.
Going back to that, it seems like a really good thing to do.
I think without, I think maybe we, because there was a ton of work and they did a lot of really great work of bringing students together and families and saying, where should this fund go, funding go? But um yeah, basically, I just wanna know, like, have we spent all the money in that that's coming in? And either should we give more to support mental health? You know, make sure we can get one in the middle school as well or something like that? Or should we distribute it elsewhere? That's kind of some of the questions I have. And so, and I totally acknowledge this will take some follow-up, um digging a little bit on what we've done and without it being a burden on the school district to tell us what we've done.
I think that's kind of an intriguing question about the accounting, like is it, should it be its own fund? And I don't know what legally the difference or if it helps us in any way to make it separate or not make it separate, but it seems for the overview purposes, it would be kind of useful to have all that stuff put in one bin.
Yeah, I've wonder, I was wondering about that too, but I don't know enough.
I'd like to get the auditor's input on the need for a separate fund, but the uh the ordinance language that, that I just pulled up is almost exactly what you said, to good memory on the, on the purposes, but it doesn't expressly require a separate fund.
Okay.
But if that's best practices or should be done otherwise, then I'd suggest checking with the auditors.
Because mainly the, my, or I guess the question that comes up is if there's a fund balance at the end of the year of, even if it's only 20,000, that's a big difference for a nonprofit member, you know, that we could give it to or putting more money into these counselors so that we're not just putting it into our general fund, just making sure it's going to what we want it to go to. Okay.
Just a.
Yeah.
Just a question, looking at the original 2020 um language and to the, just the extent to which this is sort of addiction and substance specific versus mental health writ large. I don't necessarily have an opinion on that, but if, do we, are we, are we aligned with our original mission? I wasn't, I wasn't here for that. And how do we feel, how do you feel about the kind of, the, um, the resource allocation in those different zones?
I'm totally biased. You know, I, I think what's, what's, it's a great question and I, you know, that I included that same language in the, the memo that I submitted to you all, because it's broad, right? Like prevention, cessation, treatment, enforcement, related to all sorts of things, mental, physical health, education, public health programs. You know, part of the initial question that the town asked, I think, and it was at the time, Stepping Stones, the district, Youth Zone, um was like, where should this go? And so i- if you, some of you remember, we looked at some of the like prevention data and where's the money best invested? And um that really led us to the recommendation that to go upstream with the dollars, to meet kids and families where they're at, which in our small towns and communities is our schools. And to make sure that there was access to that mental health in a way that our schools can't provide felt like the, the strongest investment at the time. I will say that still, like I still really strongly believe, I think even more now than I did eight years ago when we started, just because of the, now that the impacts that the Hope Center providers have, this, having those folks in the buildings and knowing the kind of support they provide for kids. I do believe that like this is probably, I mean, there's amazing work happening across this, this, this town in the valley. But I do think that if we're gonna invest in something, that school-based mental health provider checks a lot of boxes in terms of prevention and has pretty significant impacts in the way that they do support and respond to issues around addiction and, and use. I mean, when we get to the root causes of any sort of addiction, it's often about isolation, relationship, trauma, which have a mental health piece underneath. And so um yeah, it's, we're, we're, like, I'm very concerned that we're losing this funding from the C D E because um these, I think a lot of our schools are feeling very unsure of how we move forward without these folks in the building. So yeah, I mean, I would, I would still state that this is um a very wise upstream investment in this kind of work and it, it does reach a lot of kids.
Yeah, I think that's a good summary. There was, we had some really compelling presentations, um even before we implemented the tax on just kind of what, there, there was a lot of uh community discussion across our communities and across our school districts. I remember going to a meeting held in um Glenwood and A, that's when students stood up who were there, who um were dealing with um their own addiction, saying, you need to raise the age, because there's 18-year-olds in my high school. um, their own addiction, saying, you need to raise the age, because there's eighteen-year-olds in my high school who can buy me anything I need. Um, and so that was where the age discussion came up. And then it was just like, and um, learning about the whole, you know, prevention early on, even in middle school and providing that kind of support that youth need. So um, it was really compelling and um, kind of made it, I guess, easy to kind of fit in with this funding. But we did make sure when we drafted the language to include um, mental and physical health. And so that way, um, and um, I remember kind of advocating for that. If we ever wanted to use any of these funds to say, um, provide um scholarships to athletic programs or passes to the pool over the summer or something like that, so that we could do that as well in case we raised a ton of money. This doesn't raise a ton of money. Like as much as it does for Glenwood or some of the other communities, but um, made sure to include that in case we wanted to change the scope or broaden the scope even further or something. So.
Sounds good.
Okay. So um, it sounds like we have general thumbs-up support for providing, and you've requested a hundred and twenty thousand? Okay. Does that sound, everybody's on board with that? Um, and then we'll have a follow-up discussion, kind of just reviewing what's in there and whether we should allocate any other funding to other nonprofits or other um priorities in that fit within the um, what we are allowed to give money to. Does that sound good?
Yeah, I, I think that this idea of trying to get someone back in the middle school is like, that would be priority to me, how, how to support that, because I think that that's where it starts.
Yep, I would agree with that.
We currently do have a prevention or a prevention specialist in the middle schools.
We do, and we'll lose that funding for our next fiscal year.
Okay, I didn't, so for, but with the one twenty, that's not going to help them put, put
No, it would, the one twenty would cover one full-time F T E at, we would prioritize the high school right now. Um, at Fork and then that forty thousand, um, if we can't find any other grants, then what my job is, is I, I will convene the leaders from Carbondale Middle School, Ross, C C S and C R E S, and we'll talk through Little Worth. Um, you know, we've talked about a little bit with those schools of trying, you know, that's about a halftime F T E from Hope Center. We've talked about, you know, trying to find somebody that would spend a morning in the school and an afternoon and kind of float the Carbondale schools and um, you know, that's where we would go, worst-case scenario, if that's the only funding we have for the work. But we continue to grant funding. Yeah.
So if we did want to add the middle school, maybe we should follow up on what that additional amount would be in case we are reviewing this fund and we see that that makes sense if we, if we increase it back up to one sixty.
For sure. Yeah, yeah. It's about eighty thousand for an F T E for a full-time equivalent.
Okay.
Um, and I will name that Aspen Hope Center does fundraising on top of that, but that's what they charge us for the full-time.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions or anything to raise?
Yep.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks. For our kiddos.
Yeah. That's ahead of schedule.
We're ahead of schedule.
Ten minutes ahead of schedule.
Fascinating history of the Hotel Colorado. Um, thank you for leading that, Erica. Uh, next up is the Mountain Valley Mobile Home Park Purchase.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, as Colin mentioned earlier, uh, crossed the finish line. And uh, the way we've crossed that finish line is through all of the local governments that have participated, uh, have an I G A with the uh Housing Coalition. And that's what's before you this evening, which identifies uh, the final amounts that everyone committed, the amounts that are going to each park. And then uh, a very long list of documents that uh, will be used to implement all of the actions. And we have a resolution uh before you this evening.
Great. Thank you for that update. Any questions about this? As Brian said, lots of detail here, but fundamentally, what we need to do tonight is a motion to pass Resolution Number Nine, which then enables the I G A. And Mark's here for any legally used questions.
Well, uh, I'd move to approve Resolution, Resolution Nine Series twenty twenty-five, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Carbondale, Eagle County Housing and Development Authority, sorry, Eagle County Housing and Development Authority, Picken County, Colorado, the city of Aspen, the city of Glenwood Springs, the town of Snow West Village, the town of Basalt and West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition.
Well, second.
Motion by Colin, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
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 It passes unanimously. Great. Yeah, that's a really big deal. Thanks to everybody who put an incredible amount of effort into making that happen, Colin among them. Okay, uh, moving on then to the Aquatic Center Monthly Update. All by yourself tonight?
Okay. Running here.
Okay.
That's good.
All right, well, we'll take it. Thanks for being back.
Always happy to be back.
Yeah, exciting to watch the project really take shape. And I love the pictures and the uh, the aerial views that you included this time.
Aren't those cool? I actually um, give Eric and Brian credit for those. Um, they picked up the drone shots, uh, but the other ones are mine. It's my photography. Uh, yeah, I agree. Um, so super exciting. The project is continuing to progress. It's really fun to see um it physically coming together. Um, if you've been watching even this week, um, a lot of the flatwork is completing, a lot of the concrete has been poured, um, primarily starting around the pool decks. Um, so some of, that's some of the most visible things that you kind of see right off. Um, what we're finding is that we are on schedule. Um, they are hitting the uh milestones and marks that they intend to hit through on this revised schedule for the fall completion. Uh, masonry is essentially complete. They're now doing a punch list and, you know, minor, minor details in there, in that area. Um, roofing's complete, uh, windows and doors are being installed, um, so we're enclosing the building. That's allowing a lot of the interior finish work to be completed. Um, there's cabinetry going in. Um, we're getting electricians and plumbing and H VAC equipment, um, you know, making progress. Uh, the heat pumps for the pools are on, on the roof. You probably saw some pictures of those. Um, so they're getting placed and um, connections are being done there. Um, the spa is participating in its water test. Um, so great progress there. Uh, tile work is going in in all the pools and coping is going on, the finish around the pool, um, edges around the perimeter there. Um, so we're seeing a lot of really strong activity and everything coming together the way they had hoped it would for this uh fall period. Um, as a reminder, the activities that will remain to be completed after um, the November period, when they kind of try to winterize and have the um, most activities completed. So what will remain is that phenolic installation, um, uh, custom materials that won't, wouldn't have been fabricated in time for November. And those are anticipated to be installed inside the building, um, probably during December. Um, we're still on track to uh aim for the D C O in January. And then come spring, when we come back out, um, the pool plastering in April and landscape planting installations um at that time as well. So everything's looking good there. The total budget remains um, at the thirteen point four million. So no change to the total project cost in that, in that scenario. Um, we talked last month about some of the adjustments and the schedule change and on the impacts associated with that in um, two of the impacts or one combined impact was the additional services for uh Land and Shelter, the architect, and for Wember as owner's representative. Um, and so we were able to pull that information together and um, the town approved those um, extensions. Um, noting that despite the seven-month project schedule extension, um, both agencies calculated about ten weeks of active construction work for the um pricing that was submitted. And um, Wember noted that despite uh our current agreement, it provided for services through May of twenty twenty-five. We had not um extended services or associated fees with our work from June of twenty-five through October of twenty-five. Um, so the fee that was submitted by Wember accounts for uh requests for services to be funded through, from November through, November twenty-five through May twenty-sixth, and still accounting for about ten weeks of active construction. Um, though project management through that entire period, because we will have active project activity um through the entire seventh month period. Um, so Land and Shelter um cost is twenty-six thousand dollars, Wember's cost is thirty-nine thousand six hundred four dollars. The total impact is that sixty-five thousand six hundred four dollars. And you'll see that reflected in the project budget in um, that uh approved change in budget column in your monthly report there. Uh, with the design, uh Land and Shelter fees reflected in the Design and Engineering Division and Wember's fees in the Owners' Requirement Division. And um, then the last piece, um, that's attributed to the owner's contingency. And you'll see in that owner's contingency balance in that report, um, showing that if everything that is identified at this time is accepted, um, there remains a two hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollar balance in that owner's contingency. So um, still strong and anticipated to be sufficient to support the um remaining project activities.
Great.
Questions?
Thank you, Tammy.
Yeah.
Questions? Maybe just help me track that budget for a minute there, Tammy, because I see the, on the um, owner's contingency items in consideration. It just has a dash next to schedule change. Just help me understand that.
Um, let me pull up the report there.
I just want to make sure the bottom line is still accurate, that if that's added in there.
So tell me where you're looking, please.
Uh, in our packet, it's page three.
And it's the um contingency items. So what you're looking at there is P C O twenty-seven, which is the change request to change the schedule um, submitted by A D Miller, the general construction, the general contractor. So the um, he associates no costs with that change request and the costs associated, no change in the um guaranteed maximum price of the construction costs. So the, and that, so that's a great question. Um, and that's why you see associated with that change order, no costs associated with the change in construction costs. Um, but the costs that were submitted by Land and Shelter and Wember are impacting the um Design Services Division and the Owners' Requirements Division.
Okay. And yeah, that's what I'm confused on, because if it's not in the table on the previous page and it's not in that table of owner's contingency, I just want to make sure it's accounted for in one of these and it's not a surprise later.
Yeah, so it's accounted for in the owner's contingency. And um, the way this um, report has worked is that um, what you see in this box that you're looking at here are pending items that haven't been formally approved. Um, but both the Land and Shelter item and the Wember item have been formally approved. And so we're already reflected ahead of this box being created and are in, in the budget above. Where you see the um, blue lines, they're, they're reflected there.
Even though P C O twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight are marked as approved in the contingency?
Yeah, because P C Os remain um, possible change orders until they are um submitted in a change order that then impacts the budget change. So although they're approved, they're pending a change order to be submitted by A D Miller and signed um into a budget change.
There's a difference between a pending change order and a change order. And what she's saying is the pending change order is in here and the signed change orders are not.
Correct.
Okay, as long as that bottom line's the same and the contingency's accurate, I can't quite follow exactly how that's all adding up, but I'll just trust it. Um, any other questions for Tammy? Okay, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Eric, we're a little ahead of schedule, sorry if we caught you off-guard there. That's okay. Um, Tammy just gave us a good update and there's not too many questions. So uh, anything else that you wanted to add?
Um, we are, you know, uh, putting together a marketing campaign just to, through the end of the year to kind of that last little push to get us um, hopefully that last uh funding over that, over that hill to that last funding hurdle we have. Um, and so we're um, it's going to be kind of interesting, we're looping in some of the youth that have, you know, learned to swim at the old pool and, and doing some social media campaigns utilizing, you know, their kind of perspective on on why a pool is important. And so I think it'll be a nice piece um to add to our effort, so. And hopefully help us uh raise that, that final amount of funding that we need to, to really reach our goal, so.
Great. Questions for Eric or Tammy?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update.
You guys.
Uh, sorry, I missed it, Tammy.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is the uh, Roaring Fork Water Treatment Plant Filter Improvements Project. And this is a bid award. Good evening, Scott.
Hello, everybody.
Thanks for coming back.
Nice to see you all.
Yeah, tell us what's going on here, Scott.
All right, so um, I think we've had a few touchpoints where I've kind of talked about this project, as this is our, kind of our next um, project towards building that resiliency we've been talking about and kind of preparing the Roaring Fork Treatment Plant to take a bigger um stake in that, that resiliency effort. So this project, um, if you recall, going into the Roaring Fork Treatment Plant, there are two canisters, those are cartridge filters. This is just going to double those up and remove all the complicated membrane system that got installed in two thousand and one. That two thousand and one system, while it works okay, has an increased downtime. Um, a lot of extra overtime and things like that to keep it operating. Um, so we're going to pull those out and simplify that whole system. And then that's kind of sets the pathway to then expand that plant down the road. This, so that's kind of, that's the basics of what the project. Um, and then I think the, the thing I want to explain about the bids is they came in quite a bit higher than we're expecting. Uh, five hundred and thirty thousand was our engineering estimate to getting started. However, that scope expanded. Um, we've been on the backside of this, we've also been planning on upgrading our programmable logic control through all of the plants. Basically to modernize our current control program, uses a two, early two thousands technology. And it's getting hard to find programmers that can come up and fix things. So it's time to do that too. So we tried to scope a work into this project, um, and that's what blew up the budget. So um, we have backed up, um, and we're, we're trying to value engineer that down a little bit. I think what's going to happen is we're going to pull that scope of work out, redesign it and save some money in the long run. Um, but to keep the schedule and construction schedule going, asking you to approve this project um, in a total of, and I did just catch a typo. There is not in a total of nine hundred and twenty-two million, but nine hundred and twenty-two thousand. So um, keep, to keep the, the construction schedule for January to April twenty twenty-six. Um, then this project is teed up for that effort. And then we're going to value engineer the controls work down and we expect to save about three to four hundred thousand dollars. So this will come in around the engineering estimate. So I'm pretty confident in where we've landed. And we will eventually do the controls work, but we're going to have to sharpen our pencils a little bit on that one.
Okay. Can you, I usually ask everybody else for questions first, but I just want to ask a quick clarifying question. So you said that engineer's estimate was five hundred and thirty thousand, we expanded the scope to include controls. That gets it up nine hundred to over a million. We're removing that, but we're still approving nine twenty-two. Help me with that.
Um, and that's because to, to get, I haven't received all the, the updated um, bid estimates or, or like how this is going to affect the total cost. So to keep the, the project on schedule, that's why I'm asking to approve it at nine twenty-two. But we'll value engineer the, that cost back down a little bit. So this project will, will be delivered much under budget.
Okay. Okay, I don't know that we've done that before. I just, it's kind of an unusual approach, but um, so we're going to approve nine hundred and twenty-two thousand for a project that's really going to come in somewhere closer to six hundred thousand, you think?
That's what I expect, yeah.
And then you're going to add the controls back in, but at a reduced rate.
Yeah, um, we'll come back to you all with the controls project, um, after we can design that at a lower cost.
Okay, and just contractually, so you'll enter this contract with excavation services for nine twenty-two and then you'll do a change order or something? Is that?
Yeah.
Kind of the idea?
Yeah, we can do a, a change order down.
Okay. Other questions? I mean, that is a little bit of an unusual approach. I kind of understand the desire to just keep moving forward, but it's unusual for us to approve something that's that much over what the actual current scope is.
Yes, my question is, uh, what's the timeline? Like, if we don't? Like if we don't approve this at that nine twenty two and ask you to come back to us with the value engineered contract value? What's the timeline and what does that do to your schedule? What are the impacts for you?
The impacts are just ordering uh components and getting some of the long lead time items going. Um I believe I can be back within three to four weeks um with the updated costs. Um and maybe we could do that as an amendment if you prefer that, right? Um can, we could bring that back to you. I think the the lead time items are the driver here for us. It's getting the electrical controls that we will have to do started um and uh moving.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to mess up the schedule and certainly understand long lead time items and all that.
And there's a, is there a benefit to this time of year to make that work happen as opposed to more summertime or?
Yeah, good question. Is the the plan and the reason we want to get that project done is it's scheduled for January to April? Because we want to have the plant back online while we hit, when we get to our high season into May and June.
And excavation services is not willing to go to contract, about like a fifty percent in order to order the lead time items and then?
Good question. That's not something that we asked, but I'm sure they're pretty flexible. They work well with us, so I I I could probably go to something like that.
My concern is that we always have big hopes for value engineering. And in the state of the world right now with tariffs and stuff, I am concerned that we are going to sign this contract. And we're gonna find out that, oh, it's only two hundred thousand dollars in value engineering or it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in value engineering because there's tariffs or I I don't know. I'm, it makes me uncomfortable to sign a contract that's four hundred thousand dollars over what the engineered estimate was.
I guess, yeah, I guess I would be curious if the attorney has any opinion on this of like, is it how contractually, you know, how contractually obliged are we essentially at that point without, you know?
Yeah, to Mark or Ryan, it looks like you have something.
Yeah, I'm just thinking maybe we um if Scott's okay, if we want to pause for two weeks and kind of regroup and think about um some different ways that we can approach it, um if that works, um if we could be back in two weeks. Just sounds like there's some questions and I don't know if we have all of the answers tonight.
I mean, I think we'd feel more comfortable with that. I don't, I also understand long lead times and a schedule and trying to get ahead of the season and all those things that you're trying to work on, but it is unusual. Like I I've never approved a contract that then we're like, we're gonna approve it at this rate, but we're only gonna try to spend this much lower number. You know, usually we see those. So maybe the fifty percent or something like that, if we can get them under contract for the long lead time items and then add something later, that might even be a better approach.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's essentially what we did with the pool was that we said to them, we'll approve uh the start of your contract at this dollar amount. And then when you have the rest of the pricing or the rest of the value engineering, you come back to us and we can um. I just know the nature of the industry and the market right now and this makes me nervous.
If it makes you feel any better, even if we only reduced it by a hundred thousand dollars, I'd be in here for eight hundred twenty two. It wouldn't change anything. Still needs to be done, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just think that that's a different conversation than approving a nine hundred and twenty two thousand dollar contract, hoping that we get three hundred thousand dollars out of it. If we think that we're gonna end up at nine twenty two, I want to have that conversation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't think we're questioning the necessity of the work. I think it's just uncomfortable for us to formally legally enter into a contract with an external group that's a third more than we're really planning on paying them. It's just such a big delta between what we're talking about, the project cost and the contract. And I apologize that with everything in this packet, I didn't dig into that level of detail and understand fully that that's what we were talking about. I thought we were just, costs have increased and here we go. Um so, you know, normally I would, I don't like to put you on the spot and I apologize for that. Does that feel comfortable then to staff and to the board to look at this again in two weeks? I mean, does that radically change things? Is that a meaningful amount of time?
Yeah, I just need to make sure I can get the updated bid in time in two weeks and get it back in front of you and see how that impacts schedule.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have any other creative solutions to make us more comfortable with this?
I mean, I can also be convinced that this is what we need to do right now and then we do it and then there we have a change order and it lowers it. I I don't think anything, you know, bad is happening. It's just a really unusual move to make.
What about the conversation of amending it? Like we approve it, but can you explain that more?
Yeah, uh again, this is something um I'm with Ben a little bit. This is a little bit unique. Uh the driver is just schedule. So I'm happy to, once I get the updated bid, come back and say, hey, here's our updated bid. Um here's where the costs are gonna come down. This is how we we reduce some of that scope and this is where it lands and we can revise.
Isn't that the same as a change order?
Change order?
Isn't that, wouldn't that essentially be changing the contract?
He, I'm trying to get my arms around this in real time, so thank you for the patience. Um it would be possible to invert it and just have the additional be an option, you know, where the town, you know, says go rather than it being a subtraction through a change order? Does that make sense?
I think the problem is that you don't know what the
That original.
Is to start. Is that what I'm hearing you say? Is that you don't know what the cost, what portion of that nine twenty two is?
Exactly. I don't have the final number yet. Um and I believe if we did get that final number, what are our obligations for the other bidders? That's something I need to, maybe that's a question.
Does it need to go back out to bed?
Do we need to back out to bid with that new number? That's what, that was, that was part of the conversation of, well, it's a, if we can approve it at this, then we can
Okay.
Change order down.
The scope of work, by misunderstanding, does the scope of work changing or just?
The scope of work is reducing.
Okay, then maybe.
Is the scope of work reducing in a way that would potentially open up the range of contractors to a wider pool of people that would bid on a another round, like, I I don't, was the electronic controls?
No, it's, it, the scope is only changing for a single line item. And that line item is being reduced, but it will still exist. So I don't think it's wholly changing the project. Like that single line item came in at seven hundred thirty six thousand dollars, so, which was a big number and it surprised us as well. So that's why we said let's back up and.
And it, we don't have any issues, like let's say we approve this today at nine twenty two, assuming we're gonna get a change order. Does that cause any procurement issues? Because we're not giving the other two bidders an opportunity to also reduce their scope and cost?
I don't think so, but I, being so fresh, the issues, I think this is worth taking a breath and checking.
Yeah, taking a breath or maybe one alternative is uh approve uh in a final forum uh as approved by a town attorney and town manager, giving us a little time to think about that. And if if we can get comfortable with where we need to go, we can do that. If not, then uh we would come back in two weeks and say, yeah, we we are taking a different tact.
So we'd be authorizing you guys to work out the details sort of up to this amount, essentially, is that?
Yeah, figuring out if we can um figure out how to make that work rather than trying to make all of you.
I've got no issue with the contract form. It's simply the the questions you're raising, the the change order, the potential for procurement issues, the the questions you've asked. Um it's not, it's not the contract form.
I mean, I I would trust them to
Yeah.
To execute something on our behalf, I think.
Yeah.
Knowing that the goal is to get us.
And yeah, we could get an update in the work session, hopefully, maybe.
We've had a discussion here. If if something is really haywire and it makes sense to bring it back to a full meeting.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
We'll do that.
Yeah.
And a consent agenda for next meeting?
The work session doesn't have, but two weeks we can have it on consent, right?
Yeah.
Just to update you and we can work out the details behind the scenes and just update you and consent.
Great.
I'm fine with that.
It's fine. So then it seems like the, would the recommended action then be to approve and authorize instead of the mayor? It would be the town manager to, you know, negotiate and execute the tax agreement with this firm up to the amount of nine hundred and twenty two thousand? Would it be something like that?
Sure. How's that for a legal?
One final question. If if for some reason this has to happen at nine hundred and twenty two thousand dollars, we're good. We could, we could find the funds in your fund to fund that.
Yes, there are, there are funds. Uh the reserve is there and it is budgeted in twenty twenty six in the draft budget that you saw two weeks ago?
Okay.
More than three, two, more than two weeks ago.
And you're fairly confident that you think you can come up with a different design can, design for the controls that doesn't mean that that's just a inflated cost down the road, you know? Like, is it worth, maybe it's worth just spending the extra money if it's gonna go up, if everything is gonna keep going up in price?
That's a good question. The tariffs um are a bit of an unknown, but we think we can reduce the design. Our key input is rather than using um cellular communications, we're working with Ting to try to get fiber over there um specifically to the roaring fork treatment plant. We think that that uh that should reduce by at least fifty to a hundred thousand dollars just based on the type of equipment we have to run.
Okay.
So that's kind of our key plan, nascent plan.
Well, if somebody wants to make that motion, just swapping out a couple of words there. I think that sounds like something we're comfortable with.
I'll give it a try.
Okay.
I move to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the attached agreement with excavation services for construction of the roaring fork treatment plant filter improvements project for up to the amount of nine hundred and twenty two thousand, nine hundred and one dollars.
I might say negotiate and execute.
Negotiate and execute.
I think that's fine, because you've got, they can work together and
I don't need to sign.
Here is mud.
Motion by Jess.
Okay.
Second by Colin. You, in all seriousness, Patrick, you got what you needed from that. Okay, everybody feels comfortable with that?
And I will provide you with an update in the next consent.
Okay. And I hope what you're hearing here is faith in staff's ability to do this, but an unusual thing to enter into a contract and then subtract three hundred thousand dollars, right? So that's, that's where we're headed.
I very much appreciate all your efforts in figuring that out.
Okay. Uh a motion is on the table. Any other questions before we vote? All in favor, say, yeah, Colin second. Uh all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, uh last item on the agenda is budget overview. Do we need a break before we dive into that? Yeah, let's do that.
New York, any? Oh, really? You were in New York, yeah. Why are we in New York? Uh friends bar mitzvah. Friends, kids. Friends, kids. Did you ever see Thirty Ron?
No, I I need to though.
Hilarious, great show, just hilarious. Um but it was such a weird joke, but it's, I saw seeing one of the main characters changing as this, had this novelty head, it was werewolf bar mitzvah. Werewolf bar mitzvah, scary, boys becoming men.
Thank you all. Yeah, and it's, if they don't, that there's a revision of the lump sum in that.
Or one.
Right.
I don't understand because Yeah, and that's what I always, I mean, I keep myself out.
We looked at that to make sure that
Patrick, should I still ensure?
All good.
Yeah, a few like two weeks.
Yeah.
I think it's the best. Pardon? It's not the worst. Thank you, request. I think it had to request.
Let's search for that.
Did you see that? Yeah. Should be, yeah. There we go.
I'm hoping it was a miracle how more women die from choking because like these potatoes, they're embarrassed.
Right.
And so
That's the number one fear.
Okay, are we ready to talk budget?
I think so.
The citizenry is not excited about our first budget presentation. It's just Raleigh over there left with us.
The weight of the community is on his shoulders.
You know, all I'll say before handing it over to Ryan and Ola is um thank you both for coming into a tough situation where you've both started after August first, which is generally when we kind of formally start this type of process. Um and, you know, we had a gap between um finance directors. We had a incoming software change initiated by our outgoing finance manager that or director that wasn't completed. Um and so this is, I think, an incredible amount of work that we have before us. And I think we just have to have some grace as we go through this process this year and understand that these two gentlemen aren't gonna have every answer to every question. I think there's a couple of bigger items that we're gonna want to discuss tonight, but thank you for getting it to this point. And uh it it looked, it was clear to me and and easy to go through. So that'll hand it off.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh appreciate that. You've uh preempted some of my notes here, which had a little bit of that uh background and some of that turnover. And um we had joked, there's um, we're trying to come up with an analogy. And uh there's a video of uh that baton handoff when you're in a race. And uh there's a a video of when it really doesn't go very smoothly. And um we watched that today and decided we weren't gonna show that here. I will save that for later. But uh yeah, it has been, it has been challenging. So we are very happy to be here this evening to uh present a rough draft. Uh and uh maybe a little rough here and there. But uh the other thing that I think um in addition to that turnover and software and some of those other things, uh historical institutional knowledge is really important when you're looking at budgets. Obviously, you know, we're learning from the board tonight about some of that history on tobacco and marijuana taxes. Uh and so we are learning from the director team, but we are both learning a lot and trying to get up to speed on that historical knowledge, which can be challenging when you're putting the budget budget together and we're saying, what what is that? And everybody knows but uh the two of us. So So, uh, continuing to learn as quickly as we can. Um, I think speaking, uh, looking forward, uh, you know, we'll have a budget uh, document here that uh, is clear and concise and great for the community. Looking forward, I think uh, it's good to state your goals on the record to keep yourselves accountable. Uh, the Government Finance Officers Association uh, has a uh, budget uh, program uh, that I think it's our aim to have that certification in the future. Um, and really creates a document that uh, has a lot of detail and narrative and strategic goals and strategies, performance measures. That's where the two of us wanna be. Uh, we will not be there this year with all of those details. Like I said, we'll have a, we'll have a budget that uh, is clear and concise, but um, may not um, be able to, to hit that mark for a bit. So, um, as you mentioned, Mayor, we may not have all the answers tonight. And um, I think we're also happy to uh, and this would, would go for uh, any budget season. Um, if anybody wants to get into detail on any specific um, section of the budget, we're happy to meet. I think I can send some times out, maybe over the coming weeks where we just have some of that out there, so it's easier for you to uh, kind of sign up versus having to reach out. Um, so we'll make sure to do that. Um, as we jump in, I think you're all aware, you know, we talk about the budget, but really it is seventeen different funds. Maybe in the future it's eighteen if we decide that tobacco ought to be its own fund. Um, and the general fund is really the bread and butter, obviously, of what we do for municipal services. It's the biggest fund. Uh, it's a fund that's heavily reliant on sales taxes, so I know that's something that's always uh, on our minds and when we're looking at uh, projecting what that might be. Uh, that's critically important and trying to be conservative there. Uh, I made a note here, I really liked um, Glenwood Springs City Manager Steve Boyd presented a budget that he branded and themed as the Blue Collar Budget. I thought um, when you're talking about really complex um, budgets with lots of funds, that's actually um, helpful for the public to kind of, in a, in just a quick uh, phrase, understand what that year's budget is about. Um, that's probably trademarked, so I can't use that, but when we're looking at our budget, um, you know, three real categories, fundamentals. Those are the things that we're doing every day. We're um, you know, providing water services, we're police services, streets, all of those things. Um, exploration, I think, is another category um, that um, is important and when we're talking about that, we're talking about tactical urbanism would be a great example, I think, of we're exploring things and we're putting funds in the budget uh, to look at that. The wildfire study, another exploratory effort of, okay, what, what might we need to do there? Town center, I think, is a, a project that's still in its exploratory phase. Um, and then we move into implementation. And so we have uh, we just heard an update on the aquatic center, which is a massive uh, example of something that was exploratory and went into implementation. So, that's baked into the budget. Um, you all know this, I think, um, obviously, uh, providing funding for staff, the folks that do the majority of the work uh, here is a huge part of the budget. That's the human capital side of things. Um, and that's, that's an expensive endeavor. I know that we want to be um, I think my goal is that we're the employer of choice in this valley. That's where we wanna be. And so making sure that we're competitive on wages and benefits. Um, to be that employer of choice um, is something that's important. And so we have uh, some things that we don't control that are in the budget. Um, eleven percent increase um, on health insurance. That's something that's just part of uh, the way the world is. But then also we have penciled in uh, three percent cost of living adjustment, again, uh, trying to keep up with uh, inflation and uh, maintain a competitive wage for everybody. You know, we have some other, when we're looking back at that fundamentals and exploration and implementation framework, some things that I think are trending toward being fundamentals. We'll have a downtowner at one of your meetings coming up and talk about how that's looking and, and some different opportunities there. And I know we'd like to continue that conversation with Rafa, but that and we cycle feel like things that have gone from exploration to they might start feeling like uh, fundamental in, in this community. So, again, just sticking on that theme and how we're framing things. Budget capacity, um, we're in a position where uh, things are going well. Uh, particularly when we're looking at the general fund. Uh, you've adopted a uh, reserve requirement policy in twenty twenty-four that looked at seventy percent for that fund. And uh, that looks good. When we're looking at the recreation fund, uh, that was set at eighty percent. Um, uh, not necessarily being able to meet that if we're moving forward with the budget kind of as we've uh, penciled for you this evening. So I think some conversation uh, will be interesting there. Um, I did call out uh, my notes here, Chacos Park, I think is an important, important conversation. Uh, as we did put that in the budget, um, that was something that was um, kind of in the capital planning in the twenty-five budget that said in twenty-six, we're gonna, we're gonna have a million in there. So we put that in. I think it's a uh, point that we'll need to have some conversation on. Uh, housing fund does not have a reserve policy, uh, but I know there have been comments at a, a couple of the prior meetings about uh, obviously a huge success with being able to partner with everyone else in the valley and, and make the uh, purchase of the mobile home parks a reality. But that does uh, put a big hit on uh, the funds that were available for housing. Again, there's not a reserve policy there, but might we want to uh, try and uh, push that contribution up a little bit? Um, just a note on budget capacity, not just in um, dollars and funding, that's obviously critically important, but I think you uh, we've all experienced, this is not unique to Carbondale, but um, getting things in the budget, getting them funded and then not having the bandwidth to accomplish them. And so that is something that you will see uh, in here. There are projects looking at the remodeling of this building. Um, uh, the electrification on the roof, some of those things that end up pushing because of, of staff bandwidth. So, uh, that's just a, a reality of, of any budget. So, uh, before, I'll, I'll turn it over to Olin, we can walk through some numbers, but um, this budget's gonna be driven by the recommendations of your professional staff and then also uh, the conversations um, at the Board of Trustees about your policies, your projects, priorities. Uh, again, we'll, we'll dive into some of those and Chacos Park, I think, is, is one that's really important. The other thing I would note, it's a, it's a dynamic document. It is a flexible process. I know that we uh, aim at January one. Uh, it's, it's a dynamic process in that we're looking at revenues um, that we have through July right now. As we go through the next two months, uh, we'll see how sales taxes come in. And then when we get into the new year, um, you're not wed to this budget. If things start changing, we can come back in and we have those conversations about um, if we were um, you know, if things are trending better than we thought, or they're not, we can have some of those adjustments there. So, just general overview on kind of some budget philosophy and now I'll turn it over to Olin, we'll kind of tag team as we start walking through uh, the rough draft of the first, after the budget.
Great, thank you for that overview.
Great. Well, thanks for having me. Um, my name is Ola. For any of you, we haven't met officially. Um, really appreciate being here. It's been a lot of learning. It's been a very uh, fast sprint to get to this point, so I've only been here a few weeks. There was a lot to learn and there's still a lot to, lot to go. So, looking forward to working with all of you and, and learning more from this process. Do you have any questions on Ryan's statements before we dive in?
I mean, I think all I would say is tonight, hopefully we can stay fairly high level and fairly like larger amounts. And if there's something where one trustee has a lot of detailed questions about one fund or one thing and why this, what, that's a great opportunity to take Ryan up on the offer of, I, I told him that when Christie and Lauren were in these seats um, a couple of years ago, they did this two by two kind of thing. And um, you know, because more than two of us can't meet outside a public meeting. But it was a good opportunity to sit down with one other board member and really walk through it in a lot of detail. I think Chris and I did that once together um, outside of the public meeting. So just keep in mind that that's an option if all your questions don't get answered tonight.
Great. Yeah, happy to do that, of course. Did have a PowerPoint presentation. We printed it all for you, so you can have it in front of you, so it's easier to see. Um, so yeah, we'll just uh, let's see, dive right in. Oh, there we go. Um, so the budget calendar, today is obviously October fourteenth, budget uh, first draft budget session. On the twenty-first, we're gonna have police and recreation presenting. The twenty-eighth, it'll be planning and building. Um, and then uh, November eighteenth is the second draft of the budget review, so any important questions that come up today, we'll, we'll address those then, as well as the community grant requests. And then December ninth is appropriate the twenty-twenty-six budget and set the mill levy rate. Twelve sixteen is the fiscal twenty-twenty-six budget adoption. And then uh, January thirty-first is when it's due to the state.
Sixteenth is the one that's usually just a Zoom or whatever, or?
Sometimes, yeah. Um, sorry, just making a note. Um, sixteenth. No, we usually do that one. That's usually, there's usually one ride around Christmas Eve or so that we'll usually do. It's um, the third meeting of the month, I guess, of December. But we have to have the budget fully done. Yeah, I think that's like a statutory deadline, right?
I think so, yes.
So yeah, I think that'll be a regular meeting.
Okay.
Let's see, I skipped over the agenda. Looked at the calendar. We're gonna just briefly talk about mission, vision and strategy, have a brief discussion on OpenGov, kind of where we're at with that. Um, kind of the budget themes for twenty twenty-six, general fund re- revenue, uh, including the sales tax year over year, general fund expenses, and then we'll kind of dive into the capital plan and, and some of the fund balances at the end. Mission statement, um, so ensure fiscal integrity, in, integrity, transparency and strategic stewardship of public funds by delivering accurate financial planning, efficient resource allocation and responsive support to all department and community. Uh, anchored in the Carbondale's values of sustainability, equity and cultural vitality. We really want the finance department to be a model of mun- municipal finance excellence, empowering community priorities through data driven budgeting, inclusive engagement and resilient financial systems that support healthy, safe, health, safety, prosperity and environmental stewardship. And from a strategy perspective, really focusing on fiscal sustainability and resilience, transparent and inclusive budgeting, strategic capital investment, sustainability and innovation and departmental collaboration and service excellence. OpenGov, um, it's a new process for everyone on, on, in the town. And so it's, you know, there was uh, a lot to learn for everybody. There was a little bit of um, some confusion on how to enter items into the budget and there was a lot of cleanup work to do. I think, you know, why, why does it matter for Carbondale? Um, and it's really about budgeting drives, drives the service deli- delivery to the community. And budget performance management is the key to connecting dollars to real outcomes. And OpenGov really helps to close that gap between community expectations and what the town can deliver. And you know, we're really talking about efficiency, speeding things up, making things easier. When we roll the budget from twenty twenty-six into twenty twenty-seven, we should have a much better idea of how OpenGov works. It should be a much smoother process. It should actually save us a lot of time. So some of that return on investment for OpenGov, OpenGov is fairly expensive um, on an annual basis, and it's gonna require, um, you know, a significant, significant amount of investment in terms of time, resources to get it up to the level that we really want it to be. I think that's really where you're gonna get the return on investment. And really, one of the biggest strengths of OpenGov is really having that community portal. So it's a, it's a much more robust place for people to go in and experience the budget data. You can go in, you can drill into, into reports if you want. Everything's web-based, so you can, instead of scrolling through one giant long PDF, you can go to the places that you, that you're most interested in. Um, we can survey the community, we can survey the Board of Trustees, we can survey our own internal employees. So there's a lot of collaboration resources that are there. And I think really investing the time into creating the story book part of the budget is really where a lot of that return will come in. So, I, you know, I think it's gonna be a great software, but it's gonna take a full year of really devoting a lot of resources to getting up to the level that it'll, that, that it can be at. And this is just a, a brief picture. On the left, this is the interface that you'll see when you go to the town of Carbondale website and all the links that are there. The budget is all done in OpenGov. Any changes that, that come up get done in OpenGov. And right now, we're pulling the data out of OpenGov to create some of the resources that we've given you in the, in today's meeting. What you're not seeing is the actual OpenGov side of the budget book. So, that side still needs a lot more work, so we pulled it out, did all that in Excel, and we mirrored what was given to you in years past, just so it's consistent.
What's that, Jess?
This is, this is probably the last budget year that we're gonna have to pull everything out into Excel.
Yes, yes, absolutely. The stories will, you know, the presentations will all come out of OpenGov in the future, and I think we'll get to a much more curated presentation and we'll distill the information down to really what's the key, most important pieces. So, I think there's a little bit of a information overload with this packet, and there's just a ton of stuff for you to go through. And you know, it's maybe not the most efficient use of your time, so we wanna make sure that we're really curating the information, presenting it in, in a concise way. Some of the themes, um, I asterisk the first one, uh, flat revenue to twenty twenty-five budget. I put an asterisk on that one because over the next two months, we're really gonna dive into revenue um, and look at forecasting, look at projected year end and look at what we're gonna be really recommending for the next year's budget. For this presentation, we really focused a lot on the expense side and the capital planning side. Couple newbies here, so a lot of uh, a lot of things to learn and probably some mistakes along the way, so thank you for your patience. Um, the OpenGov process, as I mentioned, is a, is a new process for the entire team, so a lot of learning for every, everybody. And I'd just like to say thank you to the entire team. They they all did a lot of work and were very accommodating to me when I got here to really help me, get me up to speed. So, appreciate that. Uh, the other big theme is payroll costs are increasing. We did put the three percent COLA in as uh, Brian mentioned, but healthcare is, is a big one. So, eleven point three percent there uh, is, is a big number when you add everything up. Um, municipal insurance is another one that, that uh, you know, all those costs continue to creep up. And then the capital budget and the use of, of fund balances is the other kind of big theme that we'll talk about. So diving into revenue, we are looking at budgeting mostly flat. It's point two percent up to the twenty twenty-five projected year end right now, at thirty thousand above that. As I mentioned, we'll dive into this. Taxes are obviously by far the biggest driver here. We are forecasting the twenty twenty-six budget at almost one percent up over the twenty twenty-five projected year end. Um, and you'll see in the sales tax slide in, in a moment here that that is actually uh, eleven point three percent up over twenty twenty-four. So I don't think the intent was to budget up eleven point three percent for the twenty twenty-five budget. I think the projected year end came in lower than what was expected, and that's why we ended up um, budgeting, you know, one percent up to the twenty twenty-five budget, which is actually eleven point three percent up to last year's actuals.
You're saying it's eleven percent higher so far?
To last year, yes.
And we projected it three, something like, or two?
We said one percent sales tax increase, and it sounds like maybe there was some disconnect with previous people in your seats.
I think what happened was is you have the one percent was a budgeted above the projected year end. The projected year end was projected much higher than it actually came in.
For end of twenty-four.
For twenty-four.
That's good.
And that can happen again this year. It's a projection, you know, we're, we're kind of guessing when we go into November and December. The tax, the tax sales data is two months delayed, so we just got August here in October.
Okay.
So there's a little bit of a lag to the information there, and you're gonna end up with a projection that may be off. I think that's how that happened.
Is it typical to see that big of a difference in what we were, like, I, I guess I'm confused and wanna make sure that we're doing what's typical. Does that make sense? Like, the eleven percent, is that normal?
Well, I think what, what we're saying is that we're looking at projecting uh, where we'll be for twenty twenty-five. And not quite one percent above that is where we're starting that conversation. So I think that, that's a conservative approach to what we're projecting sales tax for twenty twenty-six. As Ola said, I'm not sure, you know, I think maybe it was not as conservative projecting what those final months would be uh, in the prior budget.
Yeah, I think, I think that's accurate. I mean, that's, this, this is something that Brian and I were just talking about this morning, cuz I was trying to get my head around it. Um, and that seems to be the flaw, is that we were unaware that the projection is so rosy, yeah.
Well, it's a projection. I think it, it was just um, maybe not as conservative as um, it could have been.
Conversation in here that it was a conservative projection?
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, was there a miscalculation that led us to what we thought was a conservative projection? That's my question is.
I think our, when we set it at one percent, we were being conservative. When we set our twenty twenty five budget at being one percent above what twenty twenty four was. But what these guys are sharing is that, and we didn't really question the end of year projections for twenty twenty four. When those were presented to us in the budget, at least I don't remember us questioning those. And so if those were overestimated, then we were basing our one percent, we were being conservative, but
Projections weren't very conservative.
For where, where we were at the year to date or at the, at the projected for those last two months. So.
I don't know if it had any impact, but that's, we shifted to state collection as well.
But that had been.
That was in your previous year before.
Far enough previous and we'd already taken that nice big increase. I mean, I think the good news here is we're up eleven percent over last year and we thought we'd only be up one percent, but it's it's off, it's, the projection was what was wrong.
Yeah.
I can't even say it right.
Well, so we're up right now, one, eleven percent from our projected number in twenty five?
The twenty twenty five projected year end is eleven percent up over twenty twenty four.
Yeah, the projection, but that's not where we're going right now. I am, I am confused.
Seems like it's going in a good direction.
Yes.
It's not negative.
So budget right now.
It is, and actually, and where you ended up budgeting was pretty close to what, what has actually happened. I think it was just a little bit of a miss on the, the projection, right? So we projected a little lower, but then you would have conversely wanted to budget a little bit higher and you probably wouldn't have done that. And then we would be coming in higher than our, our budget for this year, which would be great. It's fine. Instead, we're putting it just a little bit lower than our budget.
The important part for right now is that we're going to be conservative in our projections at the end for our twenty twenty five budget and how we're going to end the year.
Yeah, twenty twenty six, you know, you say, okay, we're only going to, we're going to budget flat or nine point nine percent up. That's conservative, but is your projection right? And that's really what the question needed to be last year is how, how good is your projection? And it was, it was too high. It's, I think it's tempting to budget the last few months of the year high because you have all the holiday stuff and happening. Just came in lower than what they thought.
So we're budgeting our projections conservatively and our
Next budget, your budget, conservatively. So we're being conservative in both places, which is great.
I think so, but over the next two months, that's where we're really going to dive into revenue pretty hard. And I think what we'll do, because this is such a big number and it's a single source number, we will show you the actual projections for the remainder of the year. So, you know, it's, if it's eight hundred thousand dollars in August, September, October, November, we'll tell you exactly what it was compared to previous years and you can gauge whether we're being conservative or not. Well, is that, that works.
Thanks.
This is, sorry, this might be missing in some of your packets. I added this slide at the last minute. This is just kind of an overview of the general fund, fund balance. So you start with your beginning fund balance, your revenues, expenses, use of fund balance, and that's really what I wanted to call out here of two point eight million. One time expenses of four point one million, that leaves you at an ending fund balance of thirteen point six. And when you compare that to the adjusted expenses per the policy of taking out those one time expenses of four million dollars, you're at a hundred and six percent of the fund balance. This is for the end of twenty twenty six.
Okay, that's where we had the confusion, right?
That's where we did math during a trustee meeting.
That was where we got confused about the percentage of the fund balance versus the percentage of the
We weren't confused.
Annual budget, right?
There was confusion.
Yes.
Okay.
Plenty of confusion to go around, that's all right.
But the one oh six is that, is that the one oh six percent of our fund balance policy goal or is that one hundred points, one hundred and six percent of our annual budget?
One hundred and six percent is the fun, ending fund balance percentage of your annual expenses when you remove the capital, one time capital costs of four million dollars.
Okay, so if we had extra for you, that would look like more like a hundred and forty percent or something potentially. Are you taking him down to that?
It's going up to that from.
Oh, okay.
I have another slide on the full fund balance and you'll be able to see the actual fund balance. This is per policy where we're going to take out the one time expenses. Really, the goal here is you want to, you want to, you want to know how much of your fund balance can support your operational expenses without these one time things coming in. So if the world fell apart tomorrow, we'd say, okay, we, we're not going to spend another dime. We can support this fund for a full year without any revenue at all.
That is a great explanation.
Diving into the capital plan, this is just a high level overview of the capital plan. So most of that capital is in the capital construction line, although we do bet capital in these other lines as well, ditch systems, environmental health, information, technology, recreation. And you can see that the total capital is six point five million. That four point one million we were just talking about are kind of the one time, one off expenses where the rest of it is kind of ongoing maintenance of things. And we'll get into more of the detail here in a moment. We do have a five year plan. Part of, the nice thing about open gov is we will be able to take all that information that's in our five year capital plan and really expand it out. So we want to go to a ten year plan, maybe even a twenty year plan and add a lot of things that aren't currently listed there. So over the next year, we're going to be expanding our capital plan quite significantly and giving more detail there. And open gov will help us do that. Parks is one of the biggest ones and this is probably where a lot of the discussion is. So here's their five year plan. This is parks and recs combined, but the, the top two, Chacos Park and then park bathrooms are obviously the big, the big ones up for discussion. Quick overview on buildings. This is Public Works and Streets. Sorry, the title of the slide is wrong. And I don't have a lot of comment on these, so if you have questions, just yell them out and Ryan can answer them. So this is water and wastewater. I'm not sure where Scott's presentation falls in this slide, do you know? That we just got today?
I mean, I wonder if it's that well improvements for seven fifty. And then there's another well improvements for two hundred.
And a meter deployment? Oh no, that's different.
Yeah, because I think it was in our presentation.
Well, improvement is separate, I thought, or those, the replacement of those wells.
You're right, I was thinking the well house, but yeah, you're right.
Is it technically in this year's budget, the, the filter thing?
Hmm, it could be.
He said, he said it was.
Yeah, for twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not in next year's.
Yeah, it's not here.
There you go.
This one's billings. Office space town electrification.
Yeah, and this, this is one of those examples of those first three were things that are, are in twenty five and didn't get accomplished. So that's one of those examples of bandwidth and things that still need to happen, but have pushed into twenty twenty six.
Is the new roof, it says it's in twenty twenty seven, but that's happening, right?
That's I can't remember what, different building.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That might be the launch pad.
This roof is happening as we speak.
That's the launch pad?
I don't know, it might be. I just know that there's been discussion about a launch pad roof.
Yeah.
Just before the meeting, I went and added that it was town hall because I thought that's what it said, but I could be wrong. So apologize. We'll, we'll find out, right? And get back to you on that one. This one is the one we mentioned. This is, this is every fun. You have the beginning fund balance, projected revenues, transfers, projected expenses, transfers out and the twenty twenty six budgeted, excuse me, ending balance. And then the percentage of the ending balance to the total expenses. So you can see in the general fund, this is to answer your question, eighty percent is what the actual fund balance is to the actual expenses. When you remove that, the one time costs of four million dollars, that's when it goes up to that one oh six.
Okay.
And then the two that are highlighted here are the general fund and then the recreational use tax fund. Another one of note here is the trash fund, which was, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars negative last year and is down to fifty two thousand dollars. So we're headed in the right direction and take a couple of years to come out, but should be fine. This page here is a little bit more detail on the fund balance policies. So on the far right side of the screen, you have the general fund in blue. And that is the same information you saw on the previous slide to get to the eighty percent. But this is where we take out that four point one million for the one time expenses, which are listed on the left here. That top section of capital is the four point one three six million. Those are all the things that are the one time. And you can see that there's the, the capital type column that says one time versus carry forward. All those carry forwards are, are things we just didn't get to in this budget. The green section on the, on the bottom right hand corner, that's the recreation fund. So it has a similar fund policy where you can take out the one time expenses to get the true percentage. And the percentage in this case is fifty three point nine. The fund balance policy is eighty percent. So this is still significantly below the fund, the fund balance policy. And you can see the amount that it's negative in the bottom right hand corner, five hundred and fifty six thousand is the amount below the eighty percent. So we would need to fund that by five hundred and fifty six thousand to get the fund balance up to the fund policy of eighty percent. So you can do that a variety of ways. You can cut capital expenses, push them a year. We could have more creative things like take some money out of the general.
Oh, I have a question. On the Chacos Park master plan, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that was closer to two million, but it is just, it is a million.
One million is what's budgeted. That's what was called for in twenty five, looking forward, a million in twenty six and then seven hundred thousand, I think, in twenty seven. I think they were, those numbers were to a large degree placeholders. I think there were grants that were potentially going to materialize in twenty twenty six, which did not. And so, yeah, seven hundred and fifty is twenty twenty seven. So I know there have been conversations about what, you know, what could phasing look like for that project? And, you know, I think that's something that when we have the recreation budget presented, we could get into more detail, but it does stand out as, you know, as Ola pointed out, when you're looking at the rec fund and that's not meeting the reserve. And therefore, that kind of puts in jeopardy some of the, you know, the park improvements. The three hundred thousand that's there is the restrooms at Giannetti Park. And so if we want to try and pull that back in, Chacos is funded out of the general fund and so you could transfer back into the rec fund to get closer to that reserve and fund the Giannetti bathrooms. So Chacos is a big question. I think that's one that would be good to hear some conversation. Again, we don't have to solve that this evening and Eric can provide more detail, but is that the highest priority? You know, some of the things that I think we think about are making sure that you're taking care of what you have first before you're bringing on new amenities. And so my understanding is that bathroom at Giannetti has been kind of a long, longer term need. And so maybe having some thought about being able to bring that back in. And where do we, you know, what are the thoughts on Chacos Park?
Is this, is this as good an opportunity to, I, I want, I, I am respectful of sort of waiting till, till Parks and Rec comes and, you know, gives us something to look at. At the same time, I feel like in some discussions with board members and, and just sort of personal thoughts on the matter that, that I don't, I don't want them to, to, to sort of put together a budget that, that doesn't sort of really align with it. And so, so personally, I, I just want to be real clear that, that I love the, the Chacos Park plan. I love that we got together and made a good decision on parking. And I don't think it's the right, I think we have so many other things to be doing right now. You know, so many other places for a million bucks to go that, that the phasing is as, as it's been described. And if you look at the original proposal, you know, the phasings are, are changes of very small degrees and not, and none of them, none of the phasing is, hey, let's, let's make it usable as a space for a year and then get back, then, then get back to it. And so to the extent that, that we can have us, have that space usable with some grass on it, with some shade of some sort in the next year or two. If that's, you know, I think that's important, but I think, I think some folks would, I mean, I'll speak for myself. I think, I think we have other bigger fish to fry. They're not quite as sexy, but they're really, really important. And I can't look at a million dollar line item for Chacos Park. Whether or not it's the master plan, I think in some places it's, it's shown as master plan. I think most of the planning is done.
Correct. I mean, that, that would be starting to get into the ground.
So I, I just, I, I just see a lot of other areas. First and, first and foremost, the pool. I mean, we, we chased, chased a lot of increases there and I want to make sure that we, that we make the pools available to as many people as possible. I'd rather see money going towards reduced, you know, re- reduced fees for, for as many folks as possible to get in and use the pool. Or, or whatever we need to do to, to extend hours or just make it as accessible as possible. And really maximize that new, that shiny new thing before we create another one. And so I'll be, I'll, I'll be certainly sticking to that, that policy, that, that framework, I think, going forward.
Thanks, Ross.
Other thoughts on Chacos Park?
I think it would be good to, I mean, we can discuss it all we want tonight, but I don't think it's in Eric's plan, a million dollars for Chacos Park for twenty twenty six, for the budget he presented at Parks and Rec last week.
Okay.
I think this is a carryover from, we had, we did have it because we were optimistic about having some grants that would cover a million dollars or something. So I think we put it in as like a placeholder.
Okay.
And so, but I think it would be good to talk it through with Eric and kind of what, what he's thinking. But I'm, I just opened it up to double check because I didn't remember seeing it. And because he's got, they've got quite a few maintenance projects, including out at the RV park and a whole lot of maintenance kind of all over the place that he wanted to focus his budget on. And was acknowledging the fund balance was pretty low, so.
Yeah, this is in the general fund though, so that's may, maybe why it didn't
Okay.
Didn't show up in that presentation potentially. We have had some conversations, Eric and I about, you know, what, what does this project look like? And I think a little bit to Ross's point, focus and we still have a lot of work to get the pool completed and then also figure out how to best operate that and make sure that we are really hitting a home run for the community with the way we're operating and staffing and managing and, and doing all of that. And so kind of back to a bandwidth issue. You know, do we have the ability to take on some things at Chacos Park? Again, and maybe the question before that is, again, what are some of the more pressing needs with existing infrastructure like the restrooms that we may want to look at?
Yeah, okay.
Other thoughts?
I mean, I, I like where we're going here. I definitely don't want to rush into it. I definitely also think the phasing thing, I mean, I feel like I've been hammering that a lot and hopefully that's gotten through to Nicholas that, I mean, and he's now moving towards design documents, right? So at that point, I feel like at least maybe we can identify, well, I think it's just maybe getting power underground and then hopefully, hopefully identifying a place that we can, that's protected enough from construction that we could plant a tree. Those are the two things I would like to do, but otherwise I think we can parcel it out. And I think there's maybe something to be said for phasing and going a little bit more of a humble route instead of unveiling a great big golden plan and, and then promising it this vision to people that is going to be hard for us with the pool. I felt like oftentimes the vision was a little bit out in front of our ability to pay for it. And that was frustrating as a council to feel kind of behind the eight ball before it started in some ways. So. That was frustrating as a council to feel kind of behind the eight ball before it started in some ways. Um, so. Yeah, I I think, yeah, I think we can, even if we don't get anything done, I think it's not the end of the world.
Anybody else want to weigh in? It doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of momentum right now to push Chacos Park forward in the twenty twenty six budget. So that those might be funds that we can think about differently.
Yeah, that's great feedback because that's a huge number and I think um, we can have, we can go back and think about um. How to redistribute some of that and that would be a huge, huge help.
Okay, um, I agree with what we've all talked about. I'd really love us think about where we could put some more money into our housing. We took a lot of money on our housing fund. We have a big piece of property across the street. How could we use some of that? Uh, and then the whole question of um, making sure we're taking care of the things that we have, like this building. Launchpad, um, those kinds of things would be really valuable.
Yeah, and we do, there are funds in the budget um, to have someone look at all of our facilities and help us understand. Um, so it's not just Giannetti restrooms. Um, you know, I was talking uh, with someone today about, you know, we're getting a new roof. On the flat surfaces of this roof, but we have shingles on the rest of the roof. What's the lifespan of that? I don't know that we have any idea. And so to Ola's point, five years is great, ten, fifteen, twenty is a lot better when we're trying to figure out. Uh, all of our facilities and what are those needs and not being surprised and it will take, take some effort. Um, you know, our our housing stock for our own employees, I think I would put in there as well so that. Um, you know, those are a part of that plan as well and we understand when those might need a new ref or those pieces. So I think, again, I don't want to um, you know, put too much on. Next year's budget, but I think we're going to be a lot more informed in going through those efforts uh, to help really build that plan out that will help us. Um, really weigh um, when we're looking at new things like Chacos Park or some of our existing needs. And be able to better balance how we're, how we're going to move forward with that.
Great. Yeah, it feels like that's where we are, is spending some time on the the long term capital improvement planning. And you know, this year we talked about when do we ask a tax question and then we kind of stopped really with leadership transitions in both your um, roles. And so that feels like a conversation that's ripe for the next year. Um, so that we can say, okay, to do the roundabout and to do town center and to do these restrooms and to do Chacos Park, like it'll be in there. But that process will help us put it in order. I don't think that there's a whole lot of um, intention, at least from us, on the order in which things are in this plan. It's like, here's all the stuff and I'm sure Kevin's put things in different years and there's intention there and Eric's, but you know, but. I don't think that there's a shared understanding of why we're, why the roundabout says it's in twenty twenty seven. It seems to always be a couple of years out. And that's, that's okay. That's how Eighth Street was for a long time, was it was always, it was this big pedestrian project that we never could get to. And finally, we said, just stop moving it out. We're, let's do it. Um, but it feels like the next round of these, those ones that I mentioned, especially the roundabout, town center and Chacos. They're beyond our means um, to do all those. So really strategizing around those and figuring out when and how and in what order we're going to do them.
Yeah, I think it's hard for the board to make those decisions without some of that data. I think um, that's the position that you've been in, which. Um, a lot of great things have been accomplished and I think uh, when there is a uh, a focus. And the the crossing that went in, you know, just a month ago is a great example of. Um, everybody was on board and really wanted that to happen and and that happened. Um, trying to figure out how to rank the rest of the things without uh, data is kind of hard. So. Again, patience, I think, and and more data to come and um, so. Yeah, I think uh, understanding that Chacos is not, um, you know, although it showed up uh, in twenty six and at a million. That that's not necessarily a a number one board priority gives us a lot of leeway, like I said, and I think that. Um, you know, I don't, I don't want to stop there this evening, but I think that's, that's a huge question that we have that then gives us the opportunity to. To reconfigure some recommendations.
Great. What else do you want to get into tonight?
Um, Ola's memo kind of hit uh, a lot of the different um, you know, departments. Um, and the funds, I don't know if there were any questions on any of those. Um, one of the things that um, I think I talked about with um, members kind of individually and. Uh, even going back to, I think, when I was sitting right here for an interview, talking about the HR function uh, in the organization. And so we have added uh, position um, for the HR function, which I think, thinking more broadly. Uh, about HR, uh, when we're talking about, you know, we currently have our. New development and planning group that's managing uh, the employee units. And I think that's something that uh, would come out of. Uh, there and HR could manage that. Um, I don't know if we can squeak in facilities maintenance into HR, but I know people wear different hats. And I know that's something that um, has been challenging, but at its core, when we were, you know, talking. Uh, as the director of leadership team, um, that feels like, there are a lot of positions out there that I think. Um, you know, could be utilized moving forward, but that one really benefited, I think, every department and saw. A lot of heads nodding that that would, you know, that was maybe been overdue. Um, so that's something that uh, just want to note, that's the position that's in there. Um, your police chief would like to have um, additional uh, folks in the budget. He and I've had a conversation about, uh, it's somewhat of an academic conversation with. Um, not being able to get to the full staffing that's in the budget right now. And so I think if we were. Uh, if he were able to hit that um, full staffing and then came in, I've had this happen. Uh, and Silverthorne came in and said, hey, you know, I may be losing somebody. I'm pretty sure I will. Can I do an over hire? Uh, we've got some salary savings. I think there, there's some work to do to get to full staffing there before we add that position and and take up that. That space in the budget, but just sharing that that, uh, that's something that um, you know, he would like to see. Um, just for the ratio of population in the community that we've got, got more folks, but um, we're not at full staff yet, so kind of academic.
And we are budgeting at full overtime for the police department and full staffing, so it's kind of a one or the other. If you get full staffed, you're not going to spend all that overtime. If you don't get full staffed, you're going to spend that overtime and really put a lot of burden on those, on those officers that have to do. I'll pull all that overtime. So it's not a a great thing to have all that overtime. Right now, we're kind of probably over budgeting. Because we're budgeting full staffing and full overtime and, but without this new position. So there's some, some leeway there. Maybe if you do have full staffing, you won't spend all the overtime. Maybe you could spend some of that money on marketing for new employee position. Not seeing any questions on those. Um, I have a question about the housing fund. We had the same discussion last year and just want to clarify. I think it says there's two hundred thousand dollars going into that. Does that include the transfer out to the Good Deeds program? And our contribution to Housing Coalition, or is that elsewhere? And it's okay if you don't know, but what we've done the past few years, correct me if I'm wrong, is we've put a hundred thousand in the housing fund. So that we have it earmarked for housing opportunities that come up as we did this year. And separately, we've paid a fee to the Housing Coalition of twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand. And then separately, we've given them a hundred thousand dollars for the Good Deeds buy down program. So it's been like two hundred and twenty total, a hundred stays with us and a hundred and twenty goes out the door.
We will double check, but I think that that's our understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
It was just kind of last minute. Last year, I think that Colin caught it, that we didn't have the. Uh, the hundred thousand dollars for the buy down program and we feel like we've gotten, I think the board still wants to do that, right? We've gotten good value out of that. Yeah. So we want to make sure that that full amount, I think, two twenty is accounted for and maybe checking with April Long. If they need a higher contribution or anything. It's been twenty for three or four years.
There has been discussions about asking for a lot of money.
Okay.
Who's that twenty go to?
Uh, the West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition. And then I, with WeCycle and Downtowner, I'm looking to forward to a conversation on Downtowner. Typically, we get a, like an MOU from Rafta. Way before now that gets us to, forces us to kind of commit to our funding for the next year and what that partnership's going to be. And we served on a subcommittee last year, I think, or earlier this year, maybe, and uh. Negotiate an agreement for long term funding for, we think it would end up about fifty percent. So I think it would end up close to what we've been contributing for both WeCycle and Downtowner. And so maybe just checking in with Rafta staff. Colin and I could help you get in touch with folks over there if you need it. Um, because I saw, it says it's an increase of a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. To get us up to a hundred percent. That wouldn't be a hundred percent of the total cost of those, so maybe that's to get us to the new normal. Which seems tolerable. Actually, that's a lot better than the kind of fiscal cliff that we were at risk of dropping off of. If we went from Rafta funding fifty percent of those to funding zero, which was the original plan. So anyway, let's check with Rafta.
Yeah, and I I mentioned to Ryan.
We have a meeting on this, sorry.
Oh, sorry. No, I just mentioned to Ryan that there's the ongoing conversation about the circulator.
Right.
And Downtowner.
Yeah.
Because what we'll hear from Downtowner is, we're kind of maxed. We're at eight thousand rides a month. And we can't get much higher because there's only two buses, two drivers and the waits are too long. Meanwhile, we have the circulator that Rafta pays for as part of our agreement uh, with the BRT. Are there opportunities to change that? Could Downtowner be the circulator and then peel off when we need it? So I think that's, there's going to have to be some staff conversations at some point about that and see if there's opportunities that. Um, can help us support our Downtowner work. And when we talk to Downtowner, the algorithm. And making sure we highlight that we want fifty percent going to that park and ride. So then Rafta pays for half of the cost. Because there's some internal work that's happening, which is amazing, but we want to make sure that we're taking use of our transportation funding. To fund our local service.
And we'll have a bu- a meeting, kind of.
I think they're on our agenda, no?
Yeah, um, we've got a staff meeting, uh, which will be kind of mostly my introduction to some of those details and nuances. I think that's tomorrow. Um, and then either at your next meeting or shortly thereafter, we'll have uh, Downtowner in. Uh, WeCycle, I think, will follow in November um, as well.
And I think what Colin's referring to is a bigger conversation that we don't expect to happen before this budget is approved. So it might be, I mean, I appreciate your comments, Ryan, that this is more of a living document. We think of it as like, we approve the budget and then we have to stick to it exactly. But if six months into the fiscal year, we negotiated a different agreement with Rafta and wanted to launch that halfway through the year, right? We could. So it seems like it'll be kind of probably business as usual, at least to start the, the budget year. And then um, we may change then.
I really like that. I'm glad you're keeping an eye on the ball, though, the longer picture too. But I, I see for this year, I appreciate like, yeah, just leave it alone.
Okay, other kind of big topics or amounts that you saw that you wanted to ask a question about or or clarify or? Um, suggest, is there anything that's missing, anything like that? I think now's the, the chance for that kind of stuff.
Didn't see much or that that I could sort of connect with. Um, the, I I really don't like the name, but the the tactical urbanism, um. You know, it sort of follow up. I mean, we, I think we really like scratched an itch or opened a can of worms or all, all sorts of those things, actually. And uh, and I, and I'm aware of that and lots of, lots of good upside to it, but also lots of concerns. And I want to make sure that, that we don't just sort of continue with that without um, the opportunity to kind of. Sem- s- sort of um, make some of those a little bit more per- some, some, some elements or some of the changes more permanent. Not necessarily with the exact same uh, um, implements that we were using now. But, but I just, I feel like there wasn't much in there and this was something that I think that actually had a good bit of inertia behind it. Um, and I would hate for the work of uh, Public Works and the work of um, or Streets, I guess, or the work of Pedestrian Bike Ped. To kind of not have the oomph to kind of continue with that.
Yeah, I think um, Kevin had shared, uh, when he was here, we do have funds in there to continue some of that. Uh, we can go back though and and have the conversation about, um, do we have the space? Um, when we get to that point, if we get to that point in twenty twenty six where everyone agrees, that that should be a permanent one. Um, is that kind of what you're saying?
We're trying so, or trying some things different, differently, you know, um, you know, I think what we sort of did is we, we ended up saying, well, we're going to. Sprinkle these, a few of these different options around and see how they work. Some of them worked great. Some of them, I think, could be changed around the edges. I want to make sure that if we want to change around the edges, that we have time and money and space to do that. Um, and not just say, give, not just ask for an up or down from neighbors or or the community at large. Because I think that's, that wouldn't be the way this is actually supposed to work. It's where to be experimental or uh, explo- exploratory as you said earlier.
Yeah, I know that, I know that Kevin has funds in there to do, I think, some of the temporary raised crosswalks, but we can, we can make sure to. Um, come back with more detail on exactly what it does look like. So um, I would agree, there's a lot of energy around that. Um, mostly positive, dare I say.
Yeah, that's all I was going to, I was recalling that Kevin um, included, it was like fifty thousand dollars in the Public Works budget for additional. Tactical urbanism devices to go on the road for additional spots. And I think, to me, that made a lot of sense. Because it would be, actually, there were even some, I think, identified in the bike ped trails plan that I saw on Hendrix Drive. Instead of like the little traffic circle, trying one of these raised.
Okay.
Tabletop things. Um, and so I think he didn't include funds for doing like a concrete.
Right, right.
Barriers or whatever, but continuing our strategy of testing things and then, or expanding them or continuing them, maybe.
I'm just thinking, is.
Yeah.
I'm open to spending, I'm open to to making a be- a bigger commitment to that because I think it's been received well. Yeah, I mean, and and P and I, and anytime there's, there's feedback in any direction, I think that says we're doing something, you know, and I'd, I'd like to. And if that encourages dialogue and we're here, I want to make sure that we have the funds to to embrace it and and maybe, maybe line up some more permanent options.
Yeah, I would just echo that. I mean, I think we tapped into something. I mean, we went through a really long planning, planning process. It was great. Um, I'd love us to change the name. I think, I see this as, this is community safety. I mean, our street should be safe. We shouldn't have bikers worried or people trying to cross the street and being worried about doing that. And I think our efforts on one thirty three with the uh, the Cowan and and now the one here and Icelandic, wonderful. And this just continues that into our neighborhoods. And I'd love to see us have the resources that we can get other neighborhoods involved. So we're not, we did two, it's been great. Hendrix has been fantastic. It's not perfect, but that we never expected it to be perfect. And I just would love us to be able to expand that effort as we go. So just want to make sure there's enough in there, that budget.
Yeah, we can get more detail from Kevin on just exactly what that fifty is and and see if the board feels like, you know, actually, we would like to do a few more areas. And and bump that up and have that conversation.
Yeah, just to build on what Ross said, I think I would also like to see potentially some money in the budget, even if we don't know which one it is, but to make something permanent. Because my understanding was still that these are like six month-ish experiments. And then we gather all that data, we analyze it and we say, okay, rip this one out, scale this one back and make that one concrete, you know? Um, it just, and that, I want to make sure that we don't forget to do that last step, that these shouldn't be temporary looking and feeling forever.
I think that some of the feedback has been maybe do less in one area. Like I feel like Hendrick's got hit with so many different things that some of them don't even make sense, like the medians where you're merging into the bike lane. So I would like to be a little bit more strategic about how we do sopris, so that there's less of that. I don't know.
Yeah, learn from Hendrick and apply that learning to sopris. Maybe each time we get a little closer to, okay, this is what works. And then at some point we stop experimenting and we just start putting in projects.
Yeah, I think there, there's the budget conversation, then there is, okay, how do we want to, how do we want to roll this out next year and and? Eight, eight speed bumps in a row on one road, maybe.
Please don't do that. And the Bike Ped Trails Commission is deeply engaged in this, right? Like they're looking at the details and the feedback and everything.
Yeah, for sure. Um, and I think, yeah, I think they'll have, hopefully, between them and Kevin, there'll be a list of. What's happening next year. I mean, I would be inclined to see more. I mean, I would kind of go be interested in like a striping blitz or whatever and like try to do more stuff with less material. And and maybe the striping just doesn't work at all, but I think there's some situations where you could stripe bike lanes or something into things. And maybe not have to do all of the doohickeys in plastic necessarily, but um, get a sense for it, though maybe it's paint that only lasts a year or whatever. And um, like, I feel like that's, there's a lot of ways, I think, I'm, I'm very torn about this. Because I really want us to get to the safety goals in it, but I also don't want to just uselessly make plastic waste and trash. You know, as we, and clog up the streets with stuff that makes us look like the Aspen's West End.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a lot of interest in this topic, right?
Yeah.
Bring us back to the budget, but we want to see it in the budget so that it can keep moving forward and maybe we need to schedule that check in with Bike Ped Trails. You know, sooner rather than later. You know, sooner rather than later, um, to kind of look at that vision ahead, but that doesn't have to be part of the budget necessarily. Okay, um, other items that people, thanks Russ for bringing that one, lifting that one up. Um, other items that you either saw in the budget that you wanted to talk about a little bit or that you didn't see. And if we're at a good point, we can also, we've got a lot more meetings on the budget coming up.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank um, staff around the Open Gov effort and all they're doing. I'm really looking forward to that, being able to get more information in the capital budget. Because each year we have all these capital needs. We don't have enough money. How do we figure out how we achieve some of these things? Um, so thank you. Um, I shared this with Ryan. I, I'm wondering if it's worth a conversation. Um, actually, I think it is worth a conversation about our fund balance um, policy. Just to talk about it. Is it achieving what we want it to achieve? Um, in looking at other communities, ours is quite substantial compared to other places. And um, we have a fiduciary responsibility. But we also don't wanna hoard resources if we have projects we really would like to see move forward. So uh, and I think there's ways we could structure this too, that instead of it being a hard cap, it's soft given certain criteria. Oh, we're trying, and I all, I bring this up mostly in regard to our housing goals. That they're expensive. And the more that we can put into the deal, the better it will be for us because we'll get what we want. And the less we put in, then the more the financiers will get what they want. So I, I just throw that out there as a, a thing that it'd be worth checking in on. Uh, I think it's great. We have a policy. We didn't have one for a long time. We talked about it. We got some feedback from staff and we adopted one. Clearly, we're under on the rec side and above on the, the town side. But I, I just think it'd be really useful for us to talk about what we're trying to do, what we want and what are some guidelines and do we tweak it? So it's a little bit different about how we might potentially go below with the understanding that this is how we get back. But just thinking this is a great time to talk about all that.
Yeah.
Um, I guess that brings me sort of back to town center discussions a little bit and um, so we have we have a contract that ends with art space at the end of this year.
Right.
Um, and so is there, I guess we might, I don't know if we wanna save this for another meeting or do we wanna have a discussion now about do we wanna try to get anything, last things out of them or are we trying to continue this relationship or what is hap, what is their appetite? Um, you know, there's a part of me that would, you know, we, they made that application for the Lytech thing and we did the big enchilada do, you know, um, presentation, which got downvoted by the, the CHAFA because it was too complex with the commercial elements. And then it seemed like we were going towards submitting just the Sixth Street portion as, as, as a chopped off simplified version of it. We got close to it and then they didn't submit it in the end because they, they got the idea that it wasn't gonna go over well. But I still almost feel like there's some value in doing that exercise of like, if we have the application fully packaged and put in, then hopefully it's on the shelf. If we wanna, you know, I guess I'd be curious to get the temperature again on the CHAFA side of it and like I, I don't know, that like, that project obviously would require a huge would, under any circumstance, a huge budget commitment from us, I think. But with a Lytech does cover a huge amount of it. So I, I I guess, I guess I'm not really re- ready to let that, just all that work die and be useless to us, like, and how do we make sure we salvage as much of it as possible?
Yeah, I, I think our, our intent is to come back uh, before the end of the year to have a conversation about uh, town center and uh, art space and figuring out uh, how to move things forward and, and where we go. So uh, not necessarily, um, I think separate and distinct from, although it certainly involves the budget, but a big conversation about, um, yeah, where does that sit and where do we wanna go?
Yeah, my, my thing that I wanted to bring up was the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for town center for twenty twenty six. Is that the right use of those funds? With art space or do we pause and reevaluate what we're doing?
Maybe, can you, what is that two fifty in there for? Is it sort of a placeholder so that we can do something?
I think so, yeah. I don't know that that's necessarily, um, I think art space is next phase that would have triggered more funds was from the town uh, was identifying uh, you know, a project that could come to fruition. And so I think we're kind of sitting, I don't know that there's any uh, future funding uh, plan for art space, but, but that's another, let me check and see what, what we have in there. Um, we do, we will need some dollars in there to continue moving that effort forward in some way, shape or form, whether that's with art space or if we're looking uh, at opportunities with different partners. Um, so yeah, that, I think we wanna have a, a full conversation about that project, which in part will be uh, bringing me up to speed on some of the detail that you all have that I don't know all of the history uh, or much of it. So, um, yeah, wanna, wanna have that conversation before the end of the year.
I think that a lot of the things coming up right now are these interrelated components, right, of how do we get some big projects off the ground? And so that's related to the tax question that we might ask. That's related to the capital improvement plan. It's related to our fund balance policy and how much of those reserves feel available. And it's related to all the work we've done on town center and financing and how we can get value out of the significant investment that we've made over there. Um, so.
Glad, yeah, I'm just glad that we're keeping it in front of us cuz that is something that seems like you have to suddenly sprint on or
Yeah.
potentially, so.
Okay. Um, well, if that's good for tonight, I feel like this has been a really good initial presentation of the budget. I'm not hearing a lot of major concerns or things that are left out or things that seem really out of proportion. Um, and next week, we have um, a couple of our bigger departments, police and park and rec. And then we have another um, meeting and then we have a, a more substantial kind of update, um, our first meeting in November, which that starts to feel like, say it now or it's too late kind of thing. So we've got about another month, I think. Um, where we're shifting around big numbers like Chaco's Park, we just shifted around. Um, so we'll continue to work through it. Anything else for this evening from you gentlemen?
Thank you.
Yeah, then planning and building. Yeah. Okay, and it sounds like from the conversation that I recused myself from, but Erica updated me that it sounds like we'll have some conversation about the nicotine funds and maybe the marijuana funds as well. Um, and as we look at that community grant requests, it would be good to know by then if we've got additional funds available for some of those groups we used to fund out of there.
And, and Ryan mentioned this in one of his updates, so there's two text questions on the ballot. This November. And if they both pass, our sales tax will go up significantly. But it won't go to us.
I know, it's actually really challenging.
It could be very challenging. We'll learn more for our second draft. The, what, the results, I think, will be in, in, in putting the, the, the second draft on the eighteenth. But yeah, there could be a different financial landscape for us, in particular, a question if they both pass.
Yeah, I don't think it would impact next year's
No, not next.
projections, but our ability to ask a tax question, if the fire district gets one point five percent sales tax and the child could, early childhood coalition gets point two five percent. That's one point seven five percent and that puts us right there at ten percent. Um, which is kind of the mental threshold, it seems like for sales tax, so.
Push, pushes you into lodging property, those other conversations that um.
That's also part of the conversation around JCE is how do you find a long-term funding source that's not sales tax?
Yeah.
They're talking, there's been talk about airport and like Garfield County and things like that, so. That's what you talked about there.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, for really diving in and really good work and thank you, Ryan.
Thanks for your patience.
Hola and everybody else for getting.
Yeah, appreciate it.